Monday, May, April 12th, Board of Selectmen's meeting to order. Y'all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nick, I believe you have something to read for us.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Pardon the screeching children. It is that time of the night. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30, A, Section 20, and the Governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This public hearing of the Town of Burlington Board of Selectmen via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but the public can listen and/or view this meeting while in progress as broadcast on BCAT Government Cable Access Television, BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, or by using the link provided in the agenda for our WebEx Cisco online meeting, or via phone at 408-418-9388, meeting number 1291940034. Members of the public attending this meeting virtually will be allowed to make comments if they wish to do so during the portion of the hearing designated for public comment by commenting on the BCAT Government Coverage Facebook Live page, the chat function, the WebEx virtual meeting, or via telephone at 781-270-1635. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nick. So before we go to the first agenda item, which is reconfiguring the board itself, I just want to say that it's been my pleasure to serve as chairman for the last two terms up here in the office banging the gavel. Gentlemen, I can't thank you enough for the honor that you gave me to make me chairman for two times in a row. On that note, we'll go to the first agenda item. Bob, go right to you, sir, and we'll go on from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First meeting after the election is always a reorganization of the board, so whatever the board's pleasure is in terms of determining who's going to be the chairman and vice chairman for the upcoming year.
Gentlemen, do I have any, anybody else there would like to make a motion for chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we elect Mr. Tigas as the new chairman.
I have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Priest. We'll have to go on a roll call vote, please. So we'll go with Mr. Hogan.
You guess?
Mr. Tigas.
Okay, now it's all set. Hello?
Hello.
Yeah. Can you hear?
You have to mute yourself again. We're in the middle of a meeting right now. We'll be right to you. Thank you. Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi? Yes. Sorry. Mr. Chairman, congratulations. You're on.
Thank you, Chairman Morandi. Second order of the reorganization is for a vice chair. We have a nomination for vice chair.
Well, if I may, I would like to recommend Mr. Nicholas Priest for vice chairmanship.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Do we have a second? Mr. Runyon has a second. Okay, roll call vote on this. I guess I'll start with Mr. Hogan on this one. Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
Mr. Priest?
I'll stand for kicks, but thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, and the chairman is a yes as well. So 401, Betty, as a vice chairman for Mr. Priest.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Just for the purposes of anyone who may be in tune to the meeting, item number 77 for the cultural council, that's being postponed until June 14th. That way, there are people who were here, if they're attending for this, they don't have to stick around because that's being postponed to the 14th. So we're going to go to item number 76, Burlington Equity Coalition. Rita? Now you can unmute.
Hi. Is it my time?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. So congratulations both to Mike Runyon and Joe. We are so proud of both of you for winning election, and it is wonderful news, and we are so glad to have you continuing to lead our town. So, congratulations. And today I'm wearing the hat of the Burlington Equity Coalition. So this is a brand-new organization that was started about a year, year and a half ago, and we are so happy to have about 11 members, including Saheli and a temple and the church, and few other helpies and few other organizations. So our goal is how to build the equity and how to grow the civic participation of all of our community, and how we can be equitable. Because one of the things we do here from the town community that as civically as well as in the town administration, town membership, we don't have equal participation compared to how our community is set up. So our goal is to encourage all the town committees to vote at all the elections. And we started this process sometime in January, February, but COVID didn't help much, so we were not able to get as many people out as we would like to. But we would love to see how we can work together with town administration, and how we can grow the civic participation of our community. So please let us know how we can work together.
Okay, thank you, Rita. By show of hands, any members have any comments or questions regarding this? Mr. Priest?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Rita, thank you for coming and talking about, you know, the Equity Coalition. I, you know, I think that it's fabulous, you know, for a number of reasons, and I think that what this shows me is that, you know, there, beyond just the individual organizations, right, and you touched on a couple, you know, and there are a lot, right? I know that, you know, People Helping People and Women Aid and Helpies and, you know, IAB, and there are, you know, so many individual organizations that are a part of this that are working together from a larger community perspective, which is, to me, huge, right? I think it's, you know, one of those big pieces, you know, of a strong community is how we can work together and collaborate. And so, you know, I just think it's wonderful. And then, you know, just as a teaser, I guess, is that Chairman Tigas and I have been working on a diversity, equity, inclusion subcommittee for the Board of Selectmen in terms of what we can be doing from a larger strategic perspective as a board. And obviously, you know, we want to be reaching out to the coalition in terms of membership for that subcommittee so that we can have constant communication, be working together. I was going to touch on this in my subcommittee report, but I think that this is a prime place for it. Just thank you very much. I'm looking forward to working with everybody else.
Yeah, we would love to have invitation to be a part of subcommittee. Any one of our members would love to be in, and that way we can have connection going between the Board of Selectmen and this wonderful organization who's going to make some major difference in our community.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you for all of your time. Really appreciate for all you do for the town.
Hold on, Rita. I got a comment if the other members don't.
Thanks.
I don't see any other hands. All right, Rita, I also want to acknowledge, to follow up with Selectman Runyon said, I can't wait for us to be in this post-pandemic state so we can, you know, publicly acknowledge our diversity. While Mr. Priest was talking, I'm thinking it would be such a great idea to have maybe an event on the comments such as Diversity Day or something. You know, we can talk about diversity as much as we want, but we need to celebrate our diversity. For those who have never attended the
Diwali, Diwali celebration.
The Diwali event, it's an unbelievable event, and it just shows, you know, the Indian Association of Burlington's event, but there's so many other cultures, religions. We're just a melting pot of people here, and I think we should celebrate that. And not just on a screen, but I think we should do it in public. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for the committee, and believe me, whatever we can do, we'll do for you.
Thank you. Any other comments, concerns, questions?
All right. Thank you, Rita. Anybody else from your committee here wanted to chime in from the Burlington Equity Committee, Equity Coalition? All right. Well, thank you, Rita. We'll move on to the next item. Item number 78, Chief Patterson.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
Evening.
So first of all, I'd like to congratulate Selectmen Runyon and Morandi for being reelected. Over the past several years, there's been a lot of change at the fire department in which Selectmen Runyon and Selectmen Morandi were involved with all of our projects. So, you know, we're pleased to see them gaining reelection and continuing our relationship as we move forward. Congratulations to you as being named chairman of the select board. Think you do a great job.
Thank you. Chief, have an ALS update for us?
Sure, absolutely. So tonight, we have Lieutenant Mark Sayer and Assistant Chief Connady is with us. So we just recently hit one year as providing an ALS service to the community. You know, when we, when our service first started back March 24th of 2020, we were in the, we were at the beginning stages of COVID. So unfortunately, we weren't really able to publicize our upgrade to ALS as much as we would have liked. So, you know, I can't believe it's been a year, you know, a year plus. The time just flies by, but you know, as it is right now, Burlington Fire runs our ambulance one at the ALS level 24/7. Right now, each one of our four shifts have four firefighter paramedics assigned. So you know, that way, we're running ALS, like I said, 24/7. This has certainly been a team, certainly been a collaboration amongst the town, fire department, fire union, to get our ALS program off the ground. And it's been working out really well for us. I'm going to let Lieutenant Sayer speak, followed by Assistant Chief Connady.
Thanks. And like the chief had said, March 24th marked our one-year anniversary of transitioning to the ALS level at the fire department, and after many years in the making, supportive town administration, fire administration, Leahy Hospital, and the entire fire department, it finally, it finally went into effect on March 24th last year. And it couldn't have been more, any more of an interesting time, dead smack in the middle of a pandemic. So not only did everyone have to adjust to now providing advanced life support, we had to adjust to be in the middle of a pandemic. And with that being said, everyone really stepped up to the plate, gave 110%, took incredible amount of pride in what they do. And now we have just a little under 800 advanced life support workups in town, which means that 800 residents and visitors of the Town of Burlington got advanced life support under five minutes, and we've really made a difference. Some of the feedback has been just incredibly positive and just humbling. We recently had our one-year license inspection by Office of Emergency Medical Services, who stated that we were acting as if we have been advanced life support for 10 years, not 10 months. So it's been, it's been challenging, but very exciting, exciting to move forward with even more technology as we move forward in advancing the program even more. And we just think that the Town of Burlington, its residents and visitors are much better off because of the program, and that's thanks to all the support. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant Sayer. Deputy Connady, do you have anything to add?
I'll just add that it's, it has been a long time coming. I remember sitting in the meeting room at headquarters, and this was 26 years ago, asking if anybody wanted to go become a paramedic. So it's fantastic that it's finally come around. This is the best medical care that we can provide to the, to the community of Burlington. We have it right in-house. We no longer have to wait for ALS for the primary ambulance. It's, it's just a great, great thing that the fire department has transitioned to. It's, it's, well, much needed. I mean, I can remember being on calls, waiting for an ALS service to arrive, and not putting them down at all, that they're just not always available. Now, we are moving towards having ALS 100% of the time. So I just think it's a fantastic thing for the Town of Burlington and the fire department.
Thank you, deputy. Gentlemen, members of the board, any show of hands? I've got Mr. Runyon, I believe.
Yes. Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Assistant Chief Connady is exactly right. This has been a long time coming. We've been talking about it for many, many years. This is a superior, superior level of service that the fire department is now, now offering the Town of Burlington residents, and we are very, very pleased that we could finally, finally pull this off. As a matter of fact, over the last several weeks, I've done numerous interviews and debates and so forth during the campaign, and this has always been the number-one achievement that I like to point to during my time on the Board of Selectmen. Just kudos to everybody. Deputy Chief Patterson, I mean, he put his heart and soul into pulling this together with no easy task. There's a lot of, a lot of Ts to cross and Is to dots, and it just, just a great effort, chief. I really appreciate it, and again, a superior level of service, and we are also very proud of the Burlington Fire Department and attaining this ALS. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Selectman Runyon. Selectman Morandi?
Thank you, Chairman. I almost didn't know what to say with the chairmanship. That was me a couple, 20 minutes ago. Listen, I just want to say firsthand, a lot of things Mike had said was going to come out of my mouth, but not right now. So I want to thank the chief for putting this into place. I want to thank Andy and Mark for doing what they do in this program. As firsthand, the day you guys came to my house when I had my stroke, when I went to the hospital, I can't thank you guys enough because I don't know where I would have been at that point. They were more than professional. Not even a second away from my house is when the ALS guy started doing Intervinus, did everything he could possibly do to keep me going. It was, it was just outstanding, and from the bottom of my heart, I am so happy that we put this program in, and on the way there, I think I even said, "Thank God, I voted yes on this," you know? So just thank you, guys, and the town is a better place because of it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Bob, Nick, any comments?
Yeah, I have something if I do my.
Okay, Mr. Hogan.
If you've ever needed an ambulance, I mean, really needed an ambulance, when you know our guys are coming down the street, you really do know that you're going to be taken care of efficiently, fast. These guys are well-trained. They're enthusiastic about the work they do. And I don't even know what kind of adjectives to use anymore to talk about the level of service, but I can imagine even after just 10 months, passing an exam for a test to be evaluated and being told that you're more experienced than your time on the job is not a surprise to me. So congratulations, chief, Mr. Sayer, Mr. Connady, Deputy Chief Connady, and all the members of the department. It's so, so easy to be proud of you guys and to point to you and say thank you to a lot of people who are now better off physically and alive because of you guys. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Nick, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. You know, obviously, thank you, you know. This is, this is one of those services that, you know, you hope to never have to need, but are thankful that you have. And, you know, I know a lot of residents are very thankful, are very thankful. I'm on a call, so you got to give me a second. I'm very thankful that you're here. My one-year-old is roaring at me. I apologize. I just want to acknowledge for a moment, though, does anyone else notice that Lieutenant Sayer is sitting in front of a helicopter? I just like, the six-year-old in me is like having the best time knowing he's in a hangar in front of a helicopter. I just want everyone to know that for as long as we're on the Zoom, you got to up your background game because now we have a live helicopter in the shot. Yeah, that's just, that's awesome. Met flight. That's stellar. Thank you, guys. Seriously, for everything you do, you know, Selectman Hogan said it, you know, you make it easy for everyone to be proud of you to, you know, to say, "Yes, those are, those are my guys and gals." You know, you guys are out there every day, and, you know, the people of Burlington are very fortunate for everything that you push for, strive for, and deliver.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Real quickly, I concur with everybody who spoke before me. You know, a lot of us have benefited from that service personally, or with family members, and I think a testament to this was a letter we received about a month ago from a resident who basically said that the Burlington Fire Department saved his life. And we, that person may or may not be here today, but because of the fire department, he is. And that is, that's a, you can't have a bigger thanks than that. And just, to me, the way I view it, we have Leahy in town, but this is bringing the emergency room to the scene, to the victim. So it's an extension of the emergency room, and we're going to save a lot more lives and get better treatment for all the patients that BFT sees. And again, thank you to everyone who's got this ball rolling and seen it through to fruition, and thank you all. Okay. Fire, I'm sorry. Chief Patterson, did you have anything else?
No, that's, I'm good, Jim.
All right, very good. That being said, we'll move on to Agenda Item 79, 079. It's DPW regarding reconfiguration of Peach Orchard Road, Pearl, and Winter Streets. I see Mr. Sanchez here. Mr. Sanchez, I'll defer to you on this one.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. So I want to introduce the project, and my apologies first, it's shown in the agenda as an approval. And more, it's actually more of a presentation and gathering your input on this particular project, the intersection of Peach Orchard, Winter Street, and Pearl. So I want to defer to Mr. Hayes to describe the project, as well as Steve Hildreth. And we do want to probably go back a later time after we gather both your comments and some of the neighborhood comments on what we need to do over there to make that intersection safer for pedestrians. With that, Tom, if you don't mind taking over.
Good evening. Tom Hayes, design engineer, and here with Stephen Hildreth. He's our design engineer for this particular project. So as John said, this is, we're presenting a concept. This has been on our radar for some time, and we came forward to design a gap, to fill the gap on Pearl Street and the sidewalk network between Peach Orchard and the Burlington Movement Town Line. But we had a great opportunity. We won a grant for the Terrace Hall sidewalk from the Mast Out Winters program. And so that kind of freed up the appropriation we had earmarked for Terrace Hall. So what we're going forward to town meeting this year, asking Tommy to reallocate that money to be used on Winter Street. So now not only can we fill the gap on Pearl, we can also fill the gap in the sidewalk from the town line back to Peach Orchard on Winter Street. So I think we'd have a better project. And we want to solicit, you know, feedback from the board as well as from the residents because I think with these, these two projects dovetailed together, I think we can have a better sidewalk. The way it's configured now, the way we designed it now, it works, but I think we could do a better job. So again, we want to solicit some feedback from the board and from the folks, and come back next year. We'll come back in the fall, and we'll have a new design put together that, again, we can present, make sure it works for everyone, and then go forward in 2022 to build this. So with that, I'm going to let Steve go through his presentation. He has a PowerPoint put together that describes the project.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, John, for the introduction. As Tom said, my name is Stephen Hildreth. I'm one of the senior civil engineers with the town. Give me a second, and I can get the presentation underway. Can everybody see the screen?
Yes.
All right. So as Tom said, we're headed, gets to solicit some feedback on the reconfiguration of Peach Orchard, Winter Street, and Pearl Street. So the first slide that you see here just shows like a GIS map showing the area of where we are. Zoom in a little bit more to show, we're right here. We're talking about this intersection, Peach Orchard Road, Pearl Street, Winter. Nice aerial overhead. Again, here's Pearl Street, Winter Street, and Peach Orchard. So this is what we're going to, kind of two parts to this project here. The first one is, we're going to propose a bumpout on Peach Orchard Road on this side of it. And you'll see that coming in right here. The purpose of this bumpout is to square up the intersection and allow for better sight distances for vehicles coming down Winter Street and Pearl Street. Right now, vehicles taking a left or right onto Pearl, they kind of sneak around each other. What we're also going to do is put in a new stop bar to pull that forward, so there'll be better sight distances as we come down. So that's the bumpout. Now the sidewalk. We have looked at two options for the sidewalk, and I'm going to go over the first one and explain why this one did not necessarily, is not going to work. So the first one is to go ahead, and you can see the green line right here, pick up from the existing sidewalk on Pearl Street, continue in front of number five, Winter, and try to put a crossing across Winter Street and connect into the existing sidewalk on Peach Orchard Road. We wanted to do this because it'd be one safer crossing, but however, working with the Burlington Police to get some traffic data, unfortunately, there is not enough sight distance coming from Pearl Street that would allow a vehicle to see a pedestrian in the crosswalk and safely stop if they had to do so if someone was in there. So needless to say, we are not going to go with that design because it's not safe. So we've moved on to a different design. What you can see here in the dark black lines would be the edge of pavement along with this new bumpout. And you'll see why that comes into play in a little bit. So the first part we're going to do is propose a new piece of sidewalk. You'll see in the red that just popped in on the screen right here. That will pick up from the existing sidewalk on Pearl Street. We would then propose a new crossing across Pearl Street, a new piece of sidewalk that will follow this bumpout. You're going to have a new crosswalk that will tie into the existing sidewalk here on Peach Orchard that was done last year. And then, as before, you'd have the stop bar here, and you'd have one for the crosswalk right here. And the advantage of this, because we're putting this bumpout in, we can remove this pavement, and we can actually give back clean space to the area as well. So really, in conclusion, the bumpout will align and square up the intersection of Peach Orchard Road, Pearl Street, and Winter Street. The bumpout will also allow for the new sidewalk and pedestrian crossing, as I showed you in the slides previously. And then I'd like to just, excuse me, in the future, then we can potentially extend the sidewalk down Winter Street and make the final connection, as Tom said. But we'll probably consider maybe relooking at some of this again anyways. And then lastly, I'd like to just thank Traffic Safety Officer Sergeant McDonough for his help in obtaining the field data relating to the vehicle speeds and the sight distances for this project. Anybody have any questions? I'm going to stop sharing if that's okay. I can go back if need be.
Thank you, Steve. I know this, you said this project's about a year away, and I know a lot of, I'm sure the board has some comments, and I know there's residents that want to comment. So we can do that. We're going to do that. I'll have the other members of the board go first, then if the residents want to speak now, but I think, my guess is you probably prefer email or phone call. if the residents want to speak now, but I think, my guess is you probably prefer email or phone calls because what's said tonight is only gonna, you know, be a few minutes, and this is a year away. And I think it, you know, it would probably be more appropriate to either talk directly with you or email and, you know, work over the next year to, to, you know, iron this out for, for the residents. But that being said, I'll, I'll go to the, the members of the board first. Anybody, any member of the board have a question? Just raise your hand. Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not so much a question, gentlemen, but just a recognition of how difficult it is sometimes to get to a point where you're comfortable enough to make a presentation. You know, it, it sounds simple enough to be able to say, yeah, let's put a crosswalk, a crosswalk and a couple of crossings here. But then when you start doing the work and all the people you need to start bringing in, it, it really is a testament to your stick-to-it-iveness in getting this done. Because it isn't easy. Nothing is obvious. Those of us, all of us here who are sitting on this side of the tables know that it's, it's important to get it right when we do these things, and sometimes it takes time to get them done. So I just wanted to thank you guys and just say that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Selectman Runyon.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, no, no question, more of a comment. I'm really liking the idea of that bump out. That's an exceptionally wide intersection over there. I know people, I've seen people take that, take that turn at 40 miles an hour or better. I think that will indeed slow them down. I do recognize a couple of people online from that area. I'd be curious, you know, I hope they do share either, either with their comments with you tonight or through an email. But I'd be curious to see what, they live down there, so be curious to hear what they have to say. But that's, I'm glad to see you focusing on, on that intersection. It's, it's one that desperately needs some improvement. So thank you, Steve, for your, your presentation. Very well done.
Thank you, Selectman Runyon.
Thank you, Mike. Mr. Morandi, no. Selectman Priest. Oh, actually, Mr. Morandi, go ahead.
Randy was yes, but I was just waiting for Nick, because they all, everyone had their hand up. So thank you for calling on me. Yes, I think this is a great idea, but I have a lot of questions, but I'm gonna wait to hear from the residents first. Because usually they have a better insight because they're there constantly. And I do want to congratulate, want to congratulate Steve. That was a great presentation, Tom. Nice work on those two, on that item right there. So I'm gonna listen to the, the residents, a few people I know that live on that street, and I'm gonna ask what they think about it, stuff like that. So we'll get all the input. We're a year away, so this is the best way to do it. Get it all out now and put it down later on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. One question at the moment, and then I agree, I'd like to hear from the residents. Is, are there, is there gonna be any crosswalk signaling down, either of these crosswalks?
Right now, we didn't, we didn't have any plans to put any signs up, but we can certainly put preemptive warning signs, you know, indicating that there's gonna be crosswalks ahead.
Okay. Excellent. And then just in terms of who the residents could, should be emailing in terms of reaching out, is there a particular email that they should be utilizing?
Yep, they can focus any emails, questions they have to myself. My email is my first All right, I think we're good now. I'll start over again. My email is my first initial, last name. It's shown here on the screen. So that is S. Hildreth. That's H.I.L.D.R.E.T.H@burlington.org. If you forget that, it is available on the town's website. There's a directory on there that you can get that to be able to email me.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Thank you, Steve. Okay, I, I'll apologize in advance to the residents only because, oh, sorry, Mr. Sanchez.
Tom, Jim, if you don't mind, and obviously after we hear from the residents, depending on, on how we, we perceive this and, in fact, the neighbors. I mean, we can also have a separate meeting. We don't want to hijack your selecting's meeting. We can have a separate meeting just to go over this project with the residents at a later time too as well. So I wanted to mention that out right now.
I think that's a great idea. Like I said, I apologize only because I can see so many people on the screen. I'll stop. Patricia, I believe you had a comment. Patricia O'Brien.
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for having this on your radar. As a resident who lives probably closer to the Wind Street, I drive down there and walk down regularly because my parents live about a mile away. I've been rear-ended twice, and I've had to jump into front yards to save my own life. So I appreciate what you're doing here. And I agree with John Sanchez and Selectman Hogan that a resident meeting would probably be the best use of time because we probably all have stories and ideas, for me, including a three-way stop.
Okay, is that it? Patricia?
Yes, because I would like to see a resident meeting. I'll hold the rest of my comments for that.
All right, thank you. Mr. Strauss, you had your hand up.
I did. Thank you very much, Patix, and thanks again, Mr. Hildreth, for a great presentation, very direct. My question, just very quickly, have you applied for money under the Complete Streets Program? So that we can take what money we have and push it further and use it for something else? Because this looks like a perfect, a perfect project for those people to put some money towards.
Don, Tom.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hildreth, yes. Who wants to handle that one?
We have, this is Tom Hayes. We, we do have an application in with Complete Streets. This particular sidewalk was not part of that application. But we've yet to hear back from Mastout on our, you know, complete streets application.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you much. Thank you, Mr. Strauss. Any other residents want to talk quick, you know, comment tonight? Or we will have a meetings dedicated to this subject. We can have all the residents get their input. There are no other residents. Again, this is not an approval. This is a discussion at this time. It's gonna take a while before this gets approved. Any other residents that want to comment at this moment? Yes, Burlington Scholarship Fund is what I see on the screen.
Yeah, hi, I'm Sheila Fitzpatrick. I'm on the scholarship committee, and I couldn't figure out how to change my name. Sorry. I live at 128 Pearl Street. And I did email Mr. Hildreth, and I emailed Megan, who was on the project before. You mentioned adding sidewalks from Winter Street to the Woburn border. Is that going towards the reservoir? Is that what you're planning on eventually? Because if that happens, then what you'll have to do is walk down Pearl Street, cross Pearl Street, get to Peach Orchard, cross Peach Orchard, cross Winter Street, and then continue, which is three crossings just to get to the reservoir.
Mr. Hayes?
We, well, and again, the design is not complete, but what we envision is staying on the Pearl Street side because the sidewalk in Woburn, Woburn brought up the sidewalk on the opposite side from Pearl, from Peach Orchard. So what we do is continue Pearl, down Winter, connecting that link. And then we have to find a safe crossing over to Peach Orchard. So that's what we're looking at. Because configuration now, the configuration is designed, works to fill that one gap. But if we continue the sidewalk down, it might be a little funny that you have to actually pass, if you're coming from the reservoir, you'd have to pass Peach Orchard, then cross, then cross again. So that's something we want to look at. If we combine these two projects, the Winter Street sidewalk and the Pearl Street sidewalk, we think, think we can have a better configuration.
Wouldn't that be sidewalks on two different sides of the street?
No, we continue, where the sidewalk exists in Woburn, on that side of the street, we'd run it all the way down and connect into Woburn on that side of the street.
I know, but this proposal has the sidewalk on the opposite side.
No, it just has a little chunk. And the only reason that little chunk is there because we couldn't safely cross folks at the intersection, because we don't have adequate sight distance.
No, I know. I live at that. I live right near that intersection. I've had cars plow down my privet. I've had a car in my front lawn. So yeah, I know. I live it daily. I, while driving home today, I had a car, they plow right through the stop sign at Peach Orchard. And so there's no visibility. When you get to the end of Peach Orchard, if people are gonna be crossing Peach Orchard, like, people are just gonna get plowed down again.
Well, that was part of the design as well, was to realign the end of Peach Orchard. So you narrow it down and you create a much more intuitive place to stop. Because right now you can slide right around from Peach Orchard without decelerating. But when we tee that up, you really have to come to, at least slow down if you're gonna, you know, blow through the stop sign. But it would be designed that to stop the folks at a stop bar, so they don't do that.
Very well. I'd be interested in the residents meeting, so I'm not hijacking yours, because I think there are a lot of unanswered questions, but thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hayes. I've seen that, the change at other intersections, that bump out, I agree, definitely needs to be there. It's a, it's a form of traffic calming that will, cars will, vehicles will have to slow down, otherwise they'll get damaged. So I think that's a, that's a good thing. Any other residents? We are gonna have a special meeting on this to discuss just this item. So we, it's a work in progress. Now is decided tonight. What the presentation that Mr. Hildreth gave is today's presentation, I can't tell you what's gonna change. I cannot tell you what's gonna change, but it's gonna, it's a work in progress. And we will take the feedback of the residents to make sure that it's, you know, acceptable to them and workable and that we can do. Any other residents want to chime in? Okay, I hear or see nothing. So we will set up a, create a special meeting for this. I'm sorry, someone have something?
Excuse me, yeah, Mr. Chairman. I know this is slightly off-topic, but I know in terms of the sidewalks, and I am definitely in favor of having a residents meeting. That would be very helpful. But I know this has probably been discussed, and I've been speaking to my other neighbors too. I know there's been many requests, and for whatever reason, it keeps getting denied. But there is a real speed problem on Winter Street. And I just think it's a matter of safety in terms of, we can look into doing something. I don't know, putting a couple of speed bumps on the road or something to deter people from the excess speed that's happening.
All right. Can you just identify yourself for us? I think I know who it is, but.
Yes, Patty Coro.
Patty, all right. Patty, we, I'm sure they'll take a holistic approach to this. Speed bumps are probably not gonna happen. But there are other traffic calming measures that we've used in the past that will, that have worked. And I'm sure the town will take those into consideration. But by, by all means, do you have any suggestions other than speed bumps? We'd be glad to hear them.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other residents want to chime in? Okay. All right, I think we can end that Agenda Item. Agenda Item 080, update to Wind Street, Peach Orchard traffic lights. Mr. Sanchez.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So again, Mr. Hayes is gonna take this up in a little bit. But basically, we have had a particular project in that corridor of Wind Street between Center Street and Peach Orchard for some years right now. However, the equipment at the intersection of Peach Orchard and Wind Street needs to be upgraded, is totally obsolete right now. So we do have a project that we want to show you, in which we'll be able to address the immediate issue right now. And with that, Tom, you, I don't know if, is Brian is here? Are you gonna present it, Tom?
No, I'll present it. I have, what I can do is, again, we have some plans here. I'll put it up on the screen real quick so that you can see what we're, what we're thinking here. Give me one sec. So you folks, can you see the PowerPoint here? All right. So this is something that, this is probably our worst intersection in town in our inventory. So it is in bad shape. It's something, as John mentioned, it was part of a corridor improvement. But let me just go, well, here we are on the, we're on the other end of Peach Orchard Road now. So we're Peach Orchard and Wind Street. So this is, again, zoomed in. This is Peach Orchard here. We have Wind Street, Memorial School, Marshall Simonson fighting this intersection here. Here's the design plans. So again, there's really not much to see because the configuration here is not changing. The configuration of the intersection is not changing, but it's a complete traffic light upgrade. So new signals, detection, mastoms, making everything ADA compliant. It's, the price tag on this is about $320,000, and this is within our budget. We've been working within our operating budget to, to fund these individual upgrades as it comes. This is a little more of an expensive one than, than others because it needs a lot of work. Everything is out of compliance. Everything is old. If you, if you stop and take a look, you know, we have, we, you know, we have mastoms and posts that are pretty much in the middle of the sidewalk. So that will all be replaced. The reason we're coming tonight is we've had a corridor improvement on the books for a long time. Let me actually go through it real quick. You see what we have here. So this is the, this is a concept that was put together in, in 2009. And what it, what it calls for is a brand-new signal, reconfigured of the, of Center Street with Wind Street. But also upgrade this intersection as we're doing now. We create four lanes of traffic coming through here. And it's, it's on our 2027 capital plan. It's been on there for a while, and it's been pushed back several times. It's a $3 million project, and it's a hard project. It's gonna require land takings. So it's something we feel that is, will be pushed back further as it comes along. And this intersection really needs to be upgraded now. So that's why, you just want to give a heads up, just because if, you know, people see us doing this, and they're gonna ask why when you have this other corridor improvement in the future. But this will solve a lot of the sin out there. This will, you know, bring that, that intersection up, up to par. A lot of the problems we had with this corridor was cars queuing back. I don't know if you remember, probably five or six years ago, we restrike the intersection as far down as in front of the schools to try to queue the cars up so they flow through a little easier. We pushed the lines over, so if you're taking a left on a Peach Orchard, the car's going down Wind Street, you can sneak by. So that seemed to solve a lot of that queuing, that five o'clock queuing. So there hasn't been a lot of call for this whole corridor improvement. That's why it's, it's out here in 2027. And again, once we implement this upgrade at Peach Orchard, that, that, that corridor improvement will probably be pushed back further. So any, any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you, John. I'll start with the board members. Selectman, Randy has something? And Priest. Selectman Priest. Go ahead. You're all, it's all you.
Thank you, Chairman. So, Tom, just so I'm, I'm getting this right. So if we do the improvement now to this intersection, it bumps the other project out a little bit more. Is, is that just to offset any cost differential that might occur for, let's say, duplicative work?
No, well, this, we would have to rebuild Peach Orchard again, because if we go to four lanes of traffic, you know, aside from taking land, we're gonna have to reposition all, all that infrastructure that we're putting in the ground right now.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. I know, Chairman, I'm sorry. Mr. Morandi had his hand up. Sorry. Mr. Morandi.
Thank you. The only part that frightened me a little bit was the land taking. That's a, that's a question. I want you to, to know that I'm gonna be asking a lot of questions about that, Tom. Who's we taking? How we're taking it? When it comes up? So just to let you know, I'd like to know all the particulars on that aspect of it, okay? Thank you.
Mr. Hayes, that's years away, correct?
Well, at least after my retirement.
Hey, listen, I, I, I've got three. Okay, we're all set then, never mind.
Yes, so just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, if I may, the project, the interim project that we're proposing right now to upgrade the lighting and the signals and stuff will not require the land takings that Tom was talking about. It's, it's the bigger, larger, $3 million-plus project that would require the land takings.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. That's what I was gonna clarify. No one mentioned. This is strictly lights. It's not redesigned of the intersection that I'm aware of. It's not, any, it's just, this is, you know, upgrading the lights. It's basically what it is.
Exactly.
Member Hogan. You're muted.
Whoever wants to answer this, John or Tom, or how, how much has this project cost increased since we first started talking about it and how much is it going to increase over the next seven or eight or nine years?
Mr. Hayes, I think?
Well, the, the concept plan was from 2009. So as we get closer to actually construction, we, we, we're going to have to put another budget number together. We're going to have to go through a full design. So then there are other, other factors. Both Marshall Simons and Memorial have been, you know, both have been reconstructed. So the site, the site in front of, especially Memorial has, it differs a lot from when we first started looking at that. You know, we have detention ponds there now and rain gardens. So that's really, it's going to have to go through a redesign. And again, that plan I showed you was just a concept. It was an aerial photography with some, you know, some engineering overlay, but not a significant amount of engineering was put into this. It's, it's at the concept level, it's a concept budget, that's why it's so far out.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, thank you, Selectman Hogan. Any other selectmen chiming in? Okay, I'll open this up to the public, anybody want to comment on this? Again, this is just the lights, it's not a reconfiguration of the intersection, this is just upgrading the obsolete lighting down there, streetlights. Any residents want to chime in? Yes, Pat?
Thank you. Will the upgrade allow for the kind of programming to, to kind of customize the school release time and the school start times? You know, the traffic over there is pretty bad during pickup and drop off. And I'm just wondering if it will allow for customized programming for signaling? And then I have a second question.
Okay, Mr. Hayes?
We'll incorporate the similar technology we have, the adaptive technology that we have in, you know, the, the big project we did a few years ago. It could be programmed in, that's something that I was talking with BPD about when we started, you know, putting this together. But right at the moment, there, there is no programming designed in there to accommodate the schools.
Okay, thank you. The, the other is kind of silly, but you know, I turn left there all the time and I actually never know when it's okay to turn left. So will I be told with this new light when I can turn left safely?
Oh, there's, there's a leading left arrow. So it's, it's yield on green ball, but the new standard is the flashing yield arrow. So that will be incorporated into the new design.
Okay, it must just be really short. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia, thank you, Tom. Any other residents want to comment?
Mr. Chairman, John Strauss has a hand up, I'm not sure if it's from the last discussion item or not.
Okay, Mr. Strauss, I apologize, I can only see so many people on the screen, but Mr. Strauss, do you have a comment regarding this?
Nope, sorry, that was before, I just didn't take my hand down, I apologize.
Okay. Any other residents want to talk about this, this item only? Okay, again, this is just an update to the, upgrading the traffic signal lights, not a reconfiguration of the intersection. It's a work in progress like the other one and we will just be moving on from this to the next agenda item. Tom, I do have one, actually John, maybe you, one comment. I don't know if this is a possibility, but I, I went down there and looked at that intersection and I'm just trying to think if you get all the work done at once. There are three Verizon poles that are either leaning or bent that look pretty old. I don't know if we can coordinate with them or at least have them, you know, take a look and see if it's something they can do during the upgrade because I'm, I'm just afraid that one of those poles could eventually come down. If they come down, there's a lot of, a lot of wires on them. So if you could just take a look at the three poles in the area and see what options we have.
We'll certainly follow up with that.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Anything else?
Thank you for listening to us.
Not a problem, appreciate all the information. Let's see. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, that being said, we'll move on to item zero eighty-one, it's a new public hearing, the transfer of licenses for all alcohol. I will need a member to read this into the meeting. Okay, well, our default would be Mrs. McDonough.
I am here.
Betty, if you want to read it into the record?
Yes, sir. The Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a WebEx public hearing on Monday, April 12, 2021, at or after 6:30 PM to consider the application for a transfer of an existing seven-day CB all alcohol beverages license from Legal Seafoods LLC, doing business as Legal Seafoods, to LSF Burlington LLC, doing business, same name, Legal Seafoods. And to also consider the request for a pledge of collateral, that is for the licensed stock, as allowed per the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138. The full application of backup materials are available on the town's website. And it continues to describe how you can look up the public hearing notices with the Burlington Daily Times. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, standing member McDonough. Okay, who, who's representing the applicant?
Good evening, attorney Trish Fonsworth on behalf of the applicant. And with me also on the WebEx here is Mr. Grant Tress, the manager.
Yes, hello.
Okay, hello. Trish, if you don't mind giving us some.
Sure, a brief background, yeah, this is, as Betty said, the license transfer. So this is part of a purchase of a total of 23 restaurants from Legal Seafoods in five states, 19 of them here in Massachusetts. Mr. Berkowitz decided to sell to what's called Deanu Partners. They're an Irish group out of Ireland in the hospitality business. And they actually do currently operate restaurants here in the Commonwealth. They operate the Smith and Walensky Steak Houses and the Strega Restaurants. There's two Stregas in Boston and there's that Strega Prime out in Woburn, not too far from you all. So they are purchasing in an asset deal, the restaurants and along those lines with these licenses. They've pretty much, you know, tried to keep all of the same employees and they are not going to make any changes. You know, I think Legal Seafoods is a favorite of, you know, many here in the Commonwealth where it started and they're successful. So they're going to continue that. And Mr. Tress has, was with Legal since 2011, he can describe more his background. But he will, he was the manager on the license and he will be the manager on the license once it's transferred.
All right, Trish, thank you for that background. Before we go any further, I'm looking for a motion from the membership to open this, it's a public hearing, so we need to open it officially. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Like the motion, Mr. Chairman.
Selectman Hogan makes the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Selectman Priest, second. Okay, we have to do a roll call. Selectman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan?
Yes.
Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Selectman Marandy?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, five zero, Betty. Okay, the public hearing's open. Trish, were you going to defer to Mr. Tress on the sound?
Yes, he can explain his experience and as well, just the operation there, he's been there.
Okay, Mr. Tress, floor is yours.
Sure, I've been the general manager here at Legal Seafoods Burlington for the past nine years. And I would say all of my bosses, all of the corporate structure, everything that we had before is the exact same. The only difference is Roger Berkowitz is not the president and CEO. So everything we do in this restaurant is going to be the same as it's always been. That's, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Tress. By show hands, do any members have a question or comment? Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Trish or Grant, whoever can answer this. Could you give me an explanation, a short one, what it means for a pledge of a license for collateral?
Sure, I, I can take that. The, the lender, Northern Bank and Trust, has, you know, a financing arrangement with the, with Deanu or PPX Hospitality, I'll refer to it as. And in connection with this deal specifically, there's a loan for $95 million. So the bank needs a security to, for that loan. And so all of the assets of the borrower pledged as security. Here in the Commonwealth, the only way to approve a pledge of a license and to have it perfected, meaning that, you know, it really works for the bank, is that the licensing authorities need to approve the pledge of the, the license. What happens is, you know, the bank in the event of a default of a note, they would foreclose and the bank would then be in first position. So all of the assets in the restaurant and the license would, I'll say, belong to the bank. I mean, but they're not transferred to the bank and the bank then has the right to, you know, foreclose and sell those assets. They would find a buyer and then obviously a transfer would have to happen between the defaulted restaurant and the new buyer that comes in and you would, you all would have to approve of that. So the pledge doesn't necessarily mean the bank owns the license and would operate the license. It just helps them with their, a security interest.
If I may continue a couple.
Yes, Mr. Hogan.
You, you, you say they're not going to operate it, but how long will you hold it? Before it has to come back to us?
Well, they would, if, if, if the licensee is in default, the licensee in the bank would probably negotiate. You know what I mean, that default and money's owed. If the licensee continues to operate it, the licensee is operating it until it transfers. You know, the worst case scenario, you know, a licensee would cease operating, file bankruptcy and all of that. But, you know, that's a whole nother story, but that's why the bank wants to be in a position that, you know, it would be saved or have something to recover. And then when the, you know, when the license is sold to the new buyer, the bank would collect that money for, and apply it to the note that the defaulted restaurateur owes.
I, I imagine, Mr. Tress, if you've been there years now, we're not in real threat to, to losing that license and that the, the restaurant itself will survive, even if the, the corporate name is changed and shift in ownership. So I'm not as concerned, but I, I just, I, from a legal standpoint.
Hello, I'm so sorry, guys.
Any meal please?
I'm sorry, Trish, if you heard my last comment there, it's just new to us, or at least to me.
Oh, okay, yeah, it's kind of an odd thing that the, that has to be approved by the licensing authorities, but that's how the law is written. And again, I think because I just want to make sure that the licensing authorities always know who owns and operates licenses.
Yeah, all right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to give some clarity around the, are we foregoing our authority with this license in any way? And by which I mean, if it's being used as collateral for this transaction and, you know, this all happens and we move forward and say for some reason, not saying that there will be, but there's improper use and, you know, after several warnings, it's within our, our authority to revoke the license. What happens if this is part of the collateral of the deal that was made?
It has, it has no bearing on the, the deal. I mean, if you revoke the license, you revoke the license. I mean, then, then the bank's in just a worse position and will probably have more claims against the, the restaurant, the licensee for, you know, really failing to operate and losing the license which secured the, the loan.
Okay, thank you.
All set, Nick?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Sagrino?
Yeah, just to update for Selectman Hogan and Selectman Priest. If in fact, the, the restaurant wanted to go out of business and the board would just do revocation hearings in the same way that we've done many times before on other businesses that, when they discontinued their operations. So we would have the hearings, we would call them in, ask the questions, if they found anyone for the license and then after an acceptable period of time, then the board could, could revoke the license.
Thank you for clarifying that, Mr. Sagrino. Mr. Marandy, Mr. Runyon, any questions, comments? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open up the public now. Anybody from the public have a question or a comment regarding this, the transfer of license at Legal Seafoods? Paul, Betty, do we see anybody from the public?
No. Do not.
Okay. That being said, Mr. Sagrino, oh, sorry, Selectman Runyon.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Selectman Runyon has made a motion to close the public hearing, seconded by Selectman Marandy. We'll go roll call in favor, this is just to close the public hearing. Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy?
Yes.
And the chairman's a yes, five zero, Betty, to close the public hearing. Okay. Gentlemen, is anybody interested in making a motion on this item?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve the transfer of the license, the all alcohol license from Legal Seafoods LLC, doing business as Legal Seafoods, to LSF Burlington LLC, doing business as Legal Seafoods.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan, we have a second?
And approving the request of the pledge of the license for collateral.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan, seconded by Selectman Marandy. Again, a roll call vote is to, is to approve the transfer of the license as stated by Selectman Hogan. So we will start with Mr. Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, five zero to approve, Betty. All set, Trish?
Great, thank you for your time this evening.
And Grant?
Thank you all.
Okay, moving on to item number zero eighty-two, it's a new public hearing for wine and malt license. Do I have anybody who can read this into the record?
I'll read this one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Priest.
So the, for Burlington Board of Selectmen hereby gives notice that it will hold a WebEx public hearing on Monday, April 12, 2021, at or after 6:30 PM to consider the application for a new wine and malt alcohol license for Raines International Massachusetts Incorporated, doing business as Daiyou Kaku Restaurant located at 8506 Turnpike Village at Burlington Mall, as allowed per Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 138. The plans will be available on the town's website, that's www.brownson.org backslash five side six backslash public type in hearings. For Selectmen Public Hearing notices are printed in the Brooklyn Times Chronicle. They may also be downloaded from the following site, which is www.maspublicnotices.org backslash search dot A S P X.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Being a public hearing, I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Okay, Selectman Priest opened it, made a motion, and Selectman Runyon seconded it. So this is a vote to open the public hearing. Selectman Priest?
Yes.
Selectman Hogan? Okay, we'll come back to him, Selectman Marandy. I'm sorry, Joe, try that again, we didn't get it.
Yes.
Okay, Selectman Hogan, this is to open the public hearing. Okay, Selectman Runyon?
Yes.
Okay, the chair is a yes. Five zero to open the public hearing. I believe, Mr. Vaughn, you are presenting on this?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn here tonight, representing the applicant in connection with this application. And first off, I just want to extend my congratulations to Selectman Morandi and Runyon for their reelection to the board. And also you, Mr. Chairman, for your ascendancy to the chairmanship. So, yeah, congratulations. So very excited to be before you tonight in connection with the application here. This is for a new restaurant that's looking to locate at the Burlington Mall in the building that I continue to refer to as the former Tire Battery and Auto Building for Sears, but it's that standalone building that where you see Cafe Nero and Sweet Greens. But I don't know if it's possible. I wanted to introduce an associate in our office, David Garette, who I don't think any of the board has met before, but he's helping me here with this particular application and going to be hopefully working with us in the months to come relative to others' matters as well. But it's possible for David to share his screen? I don't know if that's something, I just want to show a couple of visuals here as part of this.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Mr. Grant?
Yeah, hi. Nice to meet all of you, look forward to working with you. Let me just do this, let's see. Does that work?
We can see it.
That works. So David, could you maybe just go to the site? Yeah, there we go, yeah.
This one?
Yeah, that might be helpful for the first. So the, this is the Burlington Mall property. So you've got Mall Road that runs along the left-hand side from top to bottom. And the building that we're talking about here is that shaped building there that David is putting his cursor on. So that's the building that's the former Tire Battery Auto Building. And if you go to the next plan, David, it might be helpful just to show specifically where we're talking about here. So you can see that space, second from the left, that's the proposed location for Guy Ukaku, which is a new restaurant looking to locate there. And just a little bit about them, and I know we've got a couple of representatives here if there's any questions, including Dong Lee, who is the proposed manager. But they are an authentic Japanese grilled barbecue restaurant, authoring an exciting experience where customers share premium cooked meats over a flaming charcoal grill. They offer a wide range of meats, including skirt steak and bestseller short rib. There's over 700 locations that Guy Ukaku currently has worldwide. They opened their first location in the United States back in 2001 in Los Angeles. They actually have three locations presently in Massachusetts. I'm not sure if anyone has been, but they are in South Bay and Boston. There's one in Brookline and also Harvard Square in Cambridge. So while they're certainly new to this north suburban area, they do have a presence elsewhere. They have a very loyal following and kind of a fun and exciting experience that, you know, customers are able to, you know, cook at their table with these state-of-the-art smokeless roaster systems, which provides a nice evening out. So they are looking for a wine and malt license to be able to have patrons be able to accompany that with their meal. They presently have a wine and malt license at Harvard Square in Cambridge. And there are two other, I believe, are full liquor licenses, but this would be a wine and malt license here at the Burlington location. So David, if you could go to the next plan, just the floor plan, and again, we submitted the floor plan here as part of the submission package. But there's 102 seats to the restaurant. They're all kind of booth-oriented and table-oriented because the roaster system actually is built into each table. So there is no traditional, you know, high-top kind of bar area as part of this particular restaurant. It's not what they have here. So, and again, if you're facing the building, you know, coming in off of Mall Road, this would be the space immediately left to where Cafe Nero is. So, but 102 seats, there'd be no outdoor patio dining proposed. And as for Dwan, he has extensive experience in the restaurant industry. He most recently has been the manager of their facility in Boston. He has, you know, become accustomed to the Burlington liquor license rules and understands the obligations that go along with being a responsible restaurant operator that serves alcoholic beverages. So we think this would be a nice addition to this location and happy to answer any questions or address any comments that you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Did anybody else from the restaurant want to talk on this, Mr. Vaughn?
Dwan, are you there, sir?
Yes, I am here, yeah.
If you could maybe just introduce yourself and, you know, I'm sure I might have, you know, missed something that you wanted to also jump in on.
Yeah, no problem. My name is Dwan. I've been working with the management for the restaurant for about two years now. I came from a server, so I learned from how to serve alcohol to customer from then on. I did have my tips certify and all that stuff. So, and we've been, my restaurant, the restaurant I'm currently working right now, we are in charge of liquor and wine. So we're more diverse over here now compared to Burlington. If it's just malt and wine should be easier, but it's easy for me to handle.
All right. Well, nice meeting you virtually. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. I'm going to open this up to the board members. I can't see them.
Would you like me to take the?
Yeah, if you don't mind, David, that'd be fine.
Sure.
Unless the members want to see something specific. But I think we may even have them in our backup.
Okay.
Okay, gentlemen, raise your hand if you want to comment on this. I see Mr. Priest. Okay, Mr. Priest, and then Mr. Morandi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question, just when, when is the potential open date?
I, my understanding is that they're looking to open as early as June, I believe, of this year. So.
Great. And I assume that we'll be following all COVID protocols for restaurants at that time, all that great stuff?
Yeah, Dwan, do you want to maybe speak to that in terms of your, you know, familiarity with that, your current location? Oh. Sure, I lost them there, but.
No worries.
Suffice it to say, I think that they obviously understand what they need to do in terms of table size limitations, the duration of the meal. I think 90 minutes is still in place. So they understand what needs to be done in that regard, Mr. Priest.
Excellent. Last question, just for a point of clarification. Is this a current license the mall has in possession or is this an additional license that may be provided?
This is one of the site-specific licenses that was approved by town meeting a couple of years ago. If you recall, there were some wine and malt, as well as all liquor, all alcohol licenses that were approved by town meeting and then ultimately the state legislature. So this would be one of those licenses that we'd be utilizing.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Priest, Mr. Morandi?
Nick asked my question, I wanted to know where the license was coming from.
Yeah, probably should have said that at the outset, so sorry for missing that.
No worries.
Mr. Hogan, Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay, Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions, and I'm assuming that the experience levels of the people involved is more than just a significantly average. If they've got three locations like that in Massachusetts and they're coming here to Burlington, they're probably crossing their t's and dotting their i's appropriately. So I don't have any questions about the procedure. I would have asked what they were thinking of opening, but not being familiar with the concept, is there someone there to advise us on the wine that will go with a particular meal?
Mr. Vaughn?
Yes. Dwan, are you there?
Yes, yes, that would be me. Sorry. So I can go over the concept of the meal. So if we have all-you-can-eat options along with the course, the concept of the restaurant is pretty much the customer do the barbecuing themselves. The meat will come to the table raw. Each staff are trained to tell the customer how long each meat will be cooked and how to use the utensil that we offer to the customer as well. And, yeah, so the concept is pretty much a self-barbecueing restaurant.
So, Dwan, I think Selectman Hogan's question was more along the lines of would personnel there be able to advise pairing options? You know, a particular wine that pairs well with a particular meal?
Oh, yes. For the wine, we only have like simple stuff, so like Pinot Noir. So using it also the one that we are like recommend to go with the meat because it's a red wine.
And there's also.
It was, it was interesting listening to him explain how we'd be cooking our own food and that ought to be, that ought to be worth the price of at least the first entrance to the restaurant.
There you go. But they also have sake and other, you know, types of beverages. Yeah.
Yeah, and some of the cocktail that we do have in our location, it's just the area is just licensed for wine and malt. We do substitute the hot liquor with the sake. So that, so in a way, when you see a cocktail, it should be the same, same name.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morandi, I see your hand as well.
Just a real quick question.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the question I have is, so when we overcook it, who do we send it back to?
Yeah, yeah, if you're going to overcook it, you're going to send it back to us. I mean, it's probably because of the grill and we would definitely replace the meat for the customer if, you know, the server or whoever draw up the meat and give the customer the right direction on how to cook the meat. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Morandi. Mr. Runyon? Kevin? Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm going to open it up to the public. Anybody from the public have any comments, questions regarding this agenda item? 85 Middlesex Turnpike. Mr. Sagorino, Mrs. McDonough, have we seen anybody?
No, sir.
Okay, that being the case, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A vote.
All right, Mr. Hogan, motion to close the public hearing, seconded by Mr. Morandi. Nick, I saw your hand too, but I think he beat you on that. Seconded by Mr. Morandi, we will do a roll call to close the public hearing. Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
The chair is a yes. So the vote is five zero to close the public hearing. Any further discussion or I'm willing to entertain a motion on this agenda item?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we approve the new wine and malt license to, and forgive me for pronouncing this incorrectly, but Rains International Massachusetts Inc. doing business as Guy Ukaku Restaurant, 85 Middlesex Turnpike.
Okay, Mr. Hogan, do I have a second to that? Seconded by Mr. Morandi. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote for approval on this agenda item. Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi? Mr. Morandi, you're muted. I think you're shaking your head yes?
Yes.
Thank you, and the chair is a yes. So we have a five zero to approve agenda item number 82, the wine and malt license. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and board members. On behalf of Dwan, I know they're very excited about being part of the Burlington community here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn. And Dave?
Thank you, nice meeting you all.
Same here. Okay, moving on to the next item. It's another public hearing. It's a new alcohol license for Waterville Business Development. To see, we have the applicant on here. Mr. Vaughn, is that you also?
Yeah, you haven't been able to get rid of me yet. Yeah, I'm going to hang around for this one.
This one's a little easy to say as well.
Pronunciation's a little easier, but, yeah. So, good evening again, Mr. Chairman and.
Excuse me, Attorney Vaughn, can I just ask a member to read the add-in to the record, please?
Sorry about that.
Sorry, Mark.
That's all right.
Well, I have a member to open this, read this into the public record.
I can go again, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Priest, sorry about that, Mr. Sagorino?
Okay, so there's a public hearing. Notice hereby given that online WebEx public hearing will be held on Monday, April 12, 2021, at or after 6:30 p.m. to consider the application for a new all-alcohol license for Waterville Business Development LLC, doing business as Ex-Golf Burlington. Her premises to be located within a tenant space at 10 Wall Street in Burlington, Mass. For the development of a new restaurant and indoor golf simulator to include a full-service food and beverage operation with indoor golf services, offering lessons and course sessions via an art simulator system with the alcohol license request as allowed per Massachusetts Journal laws, Chapter 138. The plans will be available at the town's website, Board of Select and Public Hearing notices are printed in the Burlington Daily Times Chronicle. They may also be downloaded from the following site,
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, good evening again, Mr. Chairman. For the record, attorney Mark Vaughn with the law firm of Reamer Bronstein here tonight, representing the applicant. With me again is David Garette of our office, along with John Langivan, who is the principal with Waterville Business Development, the proponent of this ex-golf concept here. So we're very excited to be before you tonight in connection with this as relates to a new and a unique enterprise that is desirous of locating here in Burlington. They are looking to reuse a portion of the former Chuck E. Cheese tenant space at 10 Wall Street, property owned by the Guiterres Company, for the development of a new restaurant and indoor golf simulator facility, which will be operated as Ex-Golf Burlington. Ex-Golf is a national franchise that only has one other location presently in Massachusetts, that being in Wayland currently. John is not the franchisee for that Wayland location, but would be for this location here. So John just put up on the screen right here So, John just put up on the screen right here, a, um, the floor plan that's been submitted in connection with this application. But I can just kind of walk through it generally before I turn it over to him. I know that he wanted to go through a couple of slides. But, um, basically it offers a, uh, full-service food beverage operation with indoor golf services that offer, uh, lessons and course sessions via a state-of-the-art simulator system. That simulator system allows for patrons, uh, to play some of the best golf courses in the world. Um, Pebble Beach or courses overseas, uh, through a real, uh, uh, neat system that is, uh, the highest of technology. Um, so on this floor plan, you'll see at the bottom, uh, that's where you enter in from the, the main parking lot where the, the door is there. And then, um, to the left, there'd be some high-top table seating and, um, other, uh, more casual seating. And then you can see the, the, this seven simulator bays that are around the perimeter of the property, which is where the, uh, golf simulation facilities would be. And each, in each one of those, there's, um, seating as well for patrons to be able to, to sit and, um, participate. In the central core of that floor plan, there is the, uh, kitchen food prep area and then, uh, high countertop, um, uh, seating as well. You'll see some, some stools that surround that area and some more casual area for people to, to sit and have something to eat and, uh, something to drink if they're, you know, waiting to be able to utilize one of the simulators. Um, so, uh, there'd be a PGA pro on staff, uh, also that, uh, as I mentioned, will be able to offer lessons, uh, to, uh, to patrons. So, um, we did go before the planning board recently for, uh, special permit approval for the restaurant. Um, there were no issues raised at that time. We're anticipating that that would be, uh, issued by the, the planning board at their upcoming meeting of this week. I think that under the WebEx format, they have been, uh, doing them in, you know, two meetings just for, um, as a, as a policy. But, uh, there were, were no issues. I think, I don't want to speak for the planning board, but I think that they were supportive and, um, I think, yeah, no issues in that regard. Um, so, um, you, we feel that this would really be a nice addition to the town, uh, something that would help complement and not necessarily, uh, compete with some of the other, you know, local restaurants. It's a, it's a unique offering that we feel, you know, uh, satisfies a, a need, you know? Golf's obviously very, very popular. I mean, uh, I'm sure many of you were probably tuned in the Masters yesterday, as was I at times. So, it's, uh, something that certainly has, uh, a loyal following and this provides, um, great opportunity for folks. So, um, rather than my babbling on here, what I thought I would do is just if I could introduce John briefly. He's a, uh, he's a local resident. He, um, lives in, uh, from Lexington. And, uh, I know he's very excited about bringing this, this concept here. So, he had, uh, just a, a few slides he wanted to walk through with the board.
Certainly, Mr. Vaughn. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mark, and, and, and thank you, board. I, I appreciate the time and your consideration of this application. I, I'm not going to spend a lot of time, uh, talking about this, although happy to answer questions. Uh, but as Mark alluded to, uh, you know, there certainly is a trend right now where, uh, a, a, a lot of people, especially younger professional people, uh, rather than, you know, just going to restaurants or bars, they like to be active and they like to be doing stuff. We're, we're seeing activities in place like King's Bowling, uh, Topgolf, um, and, and Dave and Buster's, uh, where, you know, the, the, the dining experience is enhanced with some activity that, uh, is, is really working out well. Uh, so again, Ex-Golf is based on, uh, golf simulator technology. And as you can see in this image, uh, we have a library with a number of golf courses that are projected onto a screen. Um, as the player hits the ball, there are sensors that are measuring, you know, the clubhead speed and the spin rate on the balls and so forth, and superimposing the, the flight of the ball onto that screen. Uh, and, and then, uh, uh, once the ball settles, you replay it from that new location and the imagery changes to where the new ball is. And ultimately, until you hold the ball, the, the, you're, you're playing an actual golf course. So it's a really fun thing to do. Um, and, and, uh, the inertia is growing, uh, pretty, pretty quickly. There are currently thirty-two or so franchise stores in the U S. Um, as Mark mentioned, there is one in Wayland. We just opened one in Lincoln, Rhode Island. Um, and, and my plan would be to open the store in early September. Uh, that's what we're shooting for right now. Uh, as Mark had mentioned, we're using, uh, very advanced technology where we're doing things like, uh, uh, automatic, uh, ball retrieval and, and automatic teaming system. So you don't even have to bend down to put your ball on the tee. There's equipment that automatically does that for you, so it makes it a lot of fun. Uh, I have a couple of images that just show, uh, what goes on inside the store. Uh, this looks like a pre-COVID image, so fit it with me. Uh, but you, you get a sense. This is actually two photographs. On the left side, you can see three simulators plus, you know, what would typically be that, uh, uh, high-top seating area that Mark alluded, alluded to, which, you know, was primarily used when, when a new group is coming in to wait for their reservation or wait for their tee time. They have a place to sit, uh, and maybe have a snack while waiting. And once their simulator is available, they would move over to that. Um, and on the right, you're seeing, uh, you know, this really has a high, uh, uh, family element to it as well. So it's not just for golfers. It's not just for date night, uh, but it's also a nice family event, uh, that, that is a trend that's also growing. Um, these are a couple of layouts, but, but this last set of images just shows a couple of, you know, exterior of some of the stores. So, uh, the, the Wall Street location, a little bit different, but it's going to have the same, uh, general style as, as some of these other stores have. Uh, you can see in the lower left, uh, we do have a PGA professional that will be available for giving lessons for club fitting, uh, and, and maybe even, uh, uh, regripping, uh, and, and other merchandise. Uh, on the right, uh, you, you're, you're seeing, you know, the general setup with the, the, uh, uh, server, the high-top serving area, uh, and, and the countertop service area. So, that's kind of in a quick nutshell what the store is going to look like. And, uh, I'd be happy to answer any other questions that any of you have regarding that.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Vaughn. Thank you, John. I'm gonna open it up to the, uh, board members. Um, but just, just, uh, to make it aware, we typically don't approve until the planning board has made their decision. So we may have to continue this one, um, until the planning board renders their, their, uh, their decision. But that's, uh, Mr. Sagor- Sagorino, is that, um, am I correct on that?
Uh, that's my understanding, Selectman Tigas. I would defer to the alcohol subcommittee, though. Um, okay. Um, I will start with the board. Mr. Hogan, you had your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, just to, to clarify a couple of things that are going on here. Um, first of all, that John and Mark, this, this is, it's very exciting since we first started talking about this. Uh, it's, it's, it's what, it's all that people can talk about. Um, for the sake of discussion, and since some people don't have what I'm looking at, um, the next public hearing that we're going to be dealing with is also dealing with, uh, some alcohol rules and regulations as far as, um, changing definitions, uh, changing seating, some of which is going to affect, uh, uh, Ex-Golf. So, uh, as Mr. Tigas just said, the chairman, um, we may agree on a lot of things tonight, but we may not send you out the door with the approval, uh, only because we have a couple of things we want to make sure we, we get straight. Um, so if I may, Mr. Chairman, if I could start the questioning or the discussion.
Certainly.
Um, we, uh, and Mr. Vaughn, thank you for your input on this. Um, I, I know that, uh, there are some people that have an issue with, um, the current definition of what an all-purpose, uh, kitchen is or an all-purpose restaurant in order to qualify for an all-alcohol license. Um, which means we have to kind of make a change or an addition to the general definition so that Ex-Golf would be eligible for an all-alcohol license. Uh, and it would bring in, um, the AMC Theater, which doesn't have a kitchen to speak of, uh, or, uh, Lifetime, I mean, uh, Jim, um, which has a license, but maybe we need to put them in a new category. So, uh, one of the things I'm going to be talking about, and I'm not asking anybody to vote on this just yet, we're still in the early conversations. But, uh, Mr. Vaughn made a good point. When we're talking about the definition, uh, and the policies relative to either an all-alcohol license or a wine and malt, uh, beverage license, if we were to add something that would say, um, "our entertainment slash experiential venue", which was kind of an umbrella or, uh, statement, uh, describing this kind of a situation, which is, doesn't have a full service, you know, make-it-from-scratch kind of a kitchen. But something like that, uh, might cover, uh, quite well the kind of things we may be seeing in the near future coming down the road, um, that would qualify someone for an all-alcohol license. So, uh, I put that out there first. Uh, and then one other thing I'd like to put out there is we started the discussion also about, um, reducing the size of, um, the minimum number of seats required to qualify for an all-alcohol license. For too long, it has been too high. Um, and it, I think it's time we start looking at things like Ex-Golf that can't get a hundred and twenty people seats, uh, in a place. Um, um, so I, I, we had a number of people who commented on it. So, we're probably bringing it down closer to, uh, forty, fifty for an all-alcohol, uh, twenty, twenty-five for a, uh, beer and wine. But again, that's for a discussion and for a vote, uh, along with some other things. So I, I'm gonna stop there, uh, Mr. Chairman, and, um, and let some others talk. But, uh, I, uh, request the opportunity to jump in, uh, again, before we close this. Thank you. So those are the two things I'll start with.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morandi?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Bob, uh, has said everything that, that needs to be said tonight. But, um, gentlemen, we, I think the biggest thing for me is, is, uh, that, uh, later on tonight, we do have a, a, a public hearing on the number of seatings going in. So, uh, the, the whole town's in favor of this going through. Uh, it may not happen tonight, but, uh, we, I gotta wait for the planning board, which we've always done in the past. Uh, that's not a big, uh, a big issue with us. So you know, we go back and get their approval. That's, uh, they've already, from what I understand, the meeting, I did watch part of it. They, they were all in favor of this. Uh, I didn't see anything that was, uh, gonna hold you up at all. Uh, so I know you don't have the license. I know you're anxious to get the license. Uh, I, I remember talking to the board members at our last meeting. Everybody's kind of on board with this. So, um, that's all I really got to say. Everything Bob said earlier is something that we, we need to come up with a, a new plan for the, uh, the smaller number of seats that we're gonna have. What, what's it gonna say for the AMC Theater or yours or something else? So, just want you to be not very, I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Uh, Selectman Runyon? Selectman Priest? Oh, okay.
Oh, let, yeah, I could, let me just jump in quickly, Jim. Um, um, I, I like this concept. Um, I think it's, uh, I think would, would work well here in Burlington. I, I know, I know some people who have, uh, traveled out of town to, to a similar, similar, uh, style facility and they thoroughly enjoyed themselves. So, um, uh, I, I, I like the concept and I'm, uh, anxious to, uh, actually get on to that next agenda item so that we can, uh, address some of the, uh, the hiccups that we have, uh, on this one. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Priest?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so I, I just have one question. Uh, it's a purely technical, literal reading of, uh, some of the question-answer responses in the backup. Um, ju- just to clarify, are the, are the golf pros gonna be tip-certified?
Uh, yeah, so there's a, there's a very small staff here. Um, I think at any one time, there may only be, uh, three or four people in the entire store working. Uh, and, and they're gonna be multipurpose. Uh, it's not a full kitchen, as you saw. Most of our food comes in frozen and is stored frozen and just, you know, blasted in a convection oven. So everyone on the staff will not only be tip-certified, but everyone on the staff, you know, will be able to set up the golf simulators. Uh, everyone will be able to serve food. Um, and, and, and ultimately, you know, we're kind of a low overhead operation, but the plan is to, to keep the head count low. And, and the store seems to be working pretty efficiently under that model. But, but yes, all the employees would be tip-certified, including myself.
Okay, great. I only ask because in the, in the backup material, it said that the manager, the owner, or the, uh, golf pro, uh, may be the only one, you know, kind of there. And I was like, oh, well, if the manager, the owner aren't there, you know, would the golf pro be, you know, probably certified? So as long as everyone's certified, that's, that, that's fine by me. Uh, I just wanted, I just wanted to ask. Uh, otherwise, I think it's, it's a nice idea, so.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Uh, Mr. Hogan, did you want to jump back in this?
Yeah, please, if I could. Um, John, could you explain a couple of things and we'll, we'll just kind of talk through them, um, if we could? Um, explain about how the tee time works. You have, you have to make, call to make an appointment. How long is that tee time for? And how many people can play at that tee at that time? Can you have like a foursome playing?
Y- y- yeah, so, so the tee time system is done online. Uh, unlike, uh, you know, outdoor golf, you're, you're not making a tee time to play eighteen holes of golf per se. You're, you're making a tee time to reserve the simulator for a fixed amount of time. And that's typically going to be one hour or two hours. Um, and, you know, two people can play eighteen holes, uh, in one hour. Uh, I've, I've done that. And four people can play eighteen holes in two hours. Um, you know, the, the way this will work, it'll take a little bit of getting used to for some players because if you're, if you didn't get all eighteen holes and you may still be on the sixteenth hole and your, your two-hour reservation is used up, and then the system is just gonna shut down. Um, but you, you're, the, the tee times are, are, are hourly time slots that are reserved online. Uh, and then, you know, the POS system would then be able to take whatever that rental is and then add whatever food and beverage was included, uh, included in the, uh, in the, in the bill. And either, you know, have one person pay for it or it'll be able to divide it up amongst all the people that are playing. And I think what you're typically gonna see are groups of two, three, or four playing at any one time.
Okay. Um, all right, let me, let me. Can people order food that's brought to an area by the tee? Um, so they can kind of nibble and play at the same time, or is that separated?
No, that's absolutely the concept, uh, Mr. Hogan. The, the, there will be servers, uh, that will come to the simulator and take orders for either food or beverage. Uh, and they will then fulfill the orders in the food prep area, uh, and in the, you know, behind the bar counter, if you will, and then deliver the food and/or beverages back to the simulator. That's how the model works.
All right, let me, let me, and I don't mean to dominate the conversation, but I have a couple of things I just want to go over with you. Um, with the minimum staff, we have at the AMC and at, uh, Lifetime, Jim, um, rules that we've placed into the alcohol, um, rules and regulations to make it easier for people who are working in the location or the police if they come by, um, identifying what is being consumed by that person with that drink. And I'm talking about paper cups, different colors, um, for alcohol and non-alcohol. Um, is that something that's on the table for you? Because I would like to put it on the table.
Um, y- y- yeah, the, the, you know, I'm certainly open to doing that and I'm certainly intending to comply whatever the rules and regulations are. Um, you know, I think that that's a manageable request, but I, I, I guess I'm personally not familiar with that rule in the rules and regulations yet. Um-
Okay, it's, it's just a matter be- because of the, the, the setup and we're trying to keep people from moving around also. But if you've got a minimal staff, um, someone's gotta keep track. And it makes it easier for people to look over and say, well, that, that young man didn't show me his I D. Why is he drinking out of that particular cup? And it's, it's just a way of protecting you and protecting us. And Mark will tell you, we've done a great job in, in, um, uh, keeping track of the, the, the investigations at the restaurants. And only a couple of times do we ever have any that fail, and we don't want you to be one that fails also. So, uh, as we get to the final vote, I'm probably gonna ask for that kind of, uh, uh, support from you. Um, and the menu, the menu that we've been shown, uh, I would also, uh, hope that that would be the menu that would be consistent. And, and, and it's not, we're not being shown this, and then in a couple of months, it's just down to chips and peanuts.
Uh, you know, generally, this is the menu that Ex-Golf is recommending, uh, that we go with. Um, and, you know, the only, uh, you know, the, the only caveat that they've given me is this menu works very well for this model. But there may be some local tendencies that, you know, some areas prefer certain things, you know, maybe more than others. Uh, I'm actually in Michigan, uh, today doing some meetings with Ex-Golf and, and people. And one of the things that they were saying is, you know, sausage and bratwurst is very popular here in, you know, the Midwest, but it's not as popular in the Southeast, for instance. So, you know, there have been discussions about minor variations to the model. But it, you know, by and large, it's gonna consist of, you know, these items that are on this menu, you know, which, which, you know, includes things like chips and salsa, uh, chicken wings, uh, maybe soft pretzels, uh, pizza and, and, uh, you know, tho- those items that were on the menu. I think there's a charcuterie board on the menu and, and that would stay there as well. So those types of things will, will continue to be on our menu. Absolutely.
Okay. Um, the, the, some of the pictures had, uh, are, are good-sized crowds in some of the locations. Um, I would encourage also, uh, I would encourage also, uh, a manage, I believe a manageable, uh, request by having, uh, alcohol served to people, and, and that's where the alcohol stays, that they can't be walking around, um, with drinks in their hands, uh, only because that makes it more difficult to keep track of who has the alcohol and who's drinking it. And hopefully, the, uh, the waitstaff will be judicious in confirming who the, who is getting the alcohol and that they are of age, uh, when that happens. Hopefully, that'll be something that we can come to agreement on. Also, when you make the appointment, um, on, online for the tee time, does it, does it give any instructions as to when you can show up or should show up, waiting for your tee time? I mean, if you have a 3:00 PM tee time, can you show up at 9:00 AM and just sit there and drink all day?
I, I don't know of a requirement that says you have to show up in this window, uh, although it may be recommended, you know, to show up, you know, five to ten minutes before your actual tee time starts. That may be on the, the website, I don't know. I don't know of a requirement that would say you can't show up, uh, unless it's within this window. Uh, but we can certainly consider something that, that would make sense in that regard. You know, the, the intention is to, and, and, and it, you know, from what I've experienced so far, you know, most golfers, you know, they're not coming here to drink. They're not coming here to watch TV. They're coming here to, to, to enjoy the golf experience. They come, they play, and then they go home.
Those are the golfers. There are other people who may wanna show up to watch the golfers. And, you know, that, that'll be good for generating income for you with the drinks. But I wouldn't want people to start thinking that's a place they can sit for a couple of hours and watch people hit golf balls and get sloshed. So maybe we could take, if you could take a look at the application and see if there is some kind of a, you know, it doesn't have to be five minutes. It could be thirty minutes or something, but, uh, something that, that discourages the idea that this is a place where people can just come and sit and just drink and watch all night, because, again, we want this to be a family, uh, experience also. And I think the, the best way to screw that up is to have a lot of drunks in the room. So that's just my, uh, uh, five cents on that. I'm gonna hold off on that, see if anybody else has any other questions. But we can certainly, uh, write these down and, and, and go over them again. You know, when it gets closer to the time to actually vote on it. But, um, I still, you know, I don't think there's anything here that we've talked about so far, uh, that's a deal breaker.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. John, just, uh, I'll just add a few comments before we open the public hearing, uh, to the public, rather. What Selecting Hogan was referring to, and I'm not sure if Mark has enlightened you on this, the police department does undercover compliance and undercover stings, and we're very active. And we don't like when people do the wrong thing with their liquor license, so we do that, um, on a regular basis. And, uh, obviously COVID's affected that, but we do, uh, the police department does do the compliance checks and, and you send in undercover and underage, uh, persons to, to help us with that. Mark, I think you've heard a lot of what the board has said, so I think, uh, continuous would probably be the best. But we will open it to the public, but, uh, my own opinion, I think it's a great concept. I love the idea. I think it's a great location for it. It's very creative. Uh, that space has been vacant for years. I'm not sure how long. I do have one question, uh, before the public regarding the simulator. Will the simulator go into the woods and find my ball? Because I seem to spend a lot of time in the woods when I golf.
You, you may have to bring a caddy.
All right. I'll lend it to that. I'm gonna open this up to the, uh, gentleman before I open it to the public. Anybody else, uh, wanna comment or, or question? Okay, this is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open up to the public if anyone has a comment or question regarding this agenda item. All of Eddie, any requests? No? Okay, this is a public hearing. Um, you've heard the comments from the other members. And again, as I stated at the beginning, we usually don't make a decision till planning has vetted this out. And, uh, there's a couple of unanswered questions. I'm sure Mr. Vaughn will, worked well with us in the past, we can try to get answers to. Uh, Mr. Vaughn, anything else before we continue this?
No, no, I certainly appreciate your time, Mr. Chairman, all the board members, particularly Mr. Hogan and, and Marandy. I know on the, the alcohol subcommittee have, you know, put a lot of time into making sure the concept is understood. And, uh, you know, we're not trying to artificially rush any, any decision here. I think John is obviously anxious to be able to open in terms of construction and build out. So, uh, we are back before the planning board this, um, Thursday night, anticipating, um, a vote at that time. So certainly, I think if we could be on your next available agenda, that would, uh, that would be great, and we can certainly get back on the, the items that Mr. Hogan has articulated in terms of just some, some questions. But, you know, just as a general comment on, on that, Bob, uh, you know, I think John, he, he certainly does understand very much the responsibilities that go here in terms of having a liquor license. So, um, you know, this is not something where he wants to just have a, a bar, right? Where people are showing up and, you know, hanging out, you know? That's just, that's not the type of image, not, not the type of, of place that, you know, he wants and not really consistent with what ExGolf is, uh, because I think it's a matter of people being more active and actually engaging in, in a activity. Albeit virtual, it's still an activity, so. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Vaughn.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I, uh, Mark, if it's at all possible, maybe I could give you a call at the office, and we can just kind of work out some of the wording on these things and maybe save a few minutes from the next meeting, just to clarify this.
Be happy to, yes.
Okay, and also, watching, watching that golf game yesterday down in Augusta, that got a lot closer than it was looking like earlier.
Sure.
Yeah. Seems to happen every year.
Yeah. The television ratings.
Thank you, gentlemen. Before we, uh, continue this, Betty, I'm gonna ask for your input as far as when the next, uh, the, the best time would be to continue this, too?
Mark, do you think, uh, planning is going to be finalized in this shortly?
Yeah, we anticipated that it was continued to their meeting this week, uh, Betty, which is April fifteenth, so.
All right, all right, so why don't we set it for April twenty-sixth at, uh, six-thirty?
Is that acceptable, is, uh, doable, Mr. Vaughn?
Yeah, that would be, uh, that would be great. That, that's your next meeting?
Yes, it is, sir.
All right, uh, I'm looking, uh, from.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that, uh, on this particular item, that we continue the hearing to April twenty-sixth at six-thirty for Waterville Business Development LLC doing business as ExGolf Burlington.
Okay, Joe, you have a second? I have a second, Nick?
I'll second it.
Okay, uh, Mr. Hogan, uh, made the motion, and I believe it was Nick or Joe made the second, but we have to do a roll call to continue this matter to April twenty-sixth. It's at, at or after six-thirty. So, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Marandy?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes. So this will be continued to April twenty-sixth. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, I'm gonna take, uh, the agenda out of order. We're gonna jump down to number zero eighty-six. It's approval for the, uh, children's mental health.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We ought to go to number eighty-four, because that, all alcohol rules and regs that we need to discuss are part of what we just talked about for, uh, ExGolf.
All right, I, I received a request to move it up only because of Christine, um, is presenting on that.
Okay, Mark, do you mind? She has a long way to travel when she leaves.
That's quite all right.
I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, um, so we'll go to eighty, uh, item eighty-six, uh, Children's Mental Health Awareness in, uh, May. Christine, are you with us?
I'm with you.
Okay, you have the floor.
Thank you. First of all, let me just say congratulations to Mr. Runyon and Mr. Marandy for, uh, your election, reelection, so congratulations. Um, I'm coming before the board. As you know, May is Ma- uh, National Mental Health Awareness Month, and as part of that initiative, the week of May, second through May eighth, is Children's Mental Health Awareness Week. Uh, this year, in effort to draw attention to the many mental health challenges that are facing our youth, communities are encouraged to light up green. So I'm appearing, um, before this board to ask for permission to light up the common and the BYFS, the building that Thirty-three Center Street, which is the building that BYFS is occupying, with green lights. I'm also in the process of seeing if we could get some, um, lawn, lawn posters to be able to put out awareness that, uh, this is, uh, um, Children's Mental Health, um, Week. Um, as I'm sure all of you are aware, the mental health of, uh, children has certainly worsened during the pandemic, um, and it's been a critical issue that affects many families and children across Massachusetts. Throughout the state, there are crisis teams that have been assessing children for higher levels of care, and they report that families looking for CBET, which is community-based acute treatment. Beds have a minimum of a two-week wait, that the average is actually thirty days. Uh, pre-pandemic, um, the average wait was about fourteen days, so things have doubled. That means that kids who need mental health care are spending a lot of time in, in emergency rooms waiting for beds to become available. For kids with comorbidity, medical issues, or on the spectrum, have the most difficult time being placed in appropriate treatment. On a more local level, the number of Burlington High School and Marshall Simons Middle School students that have been hospitalized, both inpatient and day treatment, has doubled this year. The Bridge Program at Burlington High School has almost doubled in the number of students who participate in that program. At least two of our students here in Burlington spent four days in the emergency room because there weren't any beds available. So we're all anxious to get this pandemic behind us, but we also know as mental health providers is, um, that the need for services is gonna continue to grow even after the pandemic stops. So I'm here to let, to make all of you aware of some of the things that are going on, and I'm hoping that you'll support, um, this initiative and, um, allow for green lighting to go in the common and in our building.
Thank you, Christine. Members of the board, uh, we'll start. Nick, you have, uh, your hand up? You wanna start?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Obviously, uh, I, I support this a hundred percent. Wear my green tie tonight, uh, specifically because I think this was an agenda item.
Good job.
Every once in a while, I get it right, Christine. Not, not always. In, i- is your department supplying the lights? Is that, how, how is this gonna?
The interesting thing is that on the common, there is, there's colors that they get that then they can, they can put whatever color they want on the common. We will supply the lights for our building, but on the common, um, I already spoke to, um, oh, God, now I'm gonna block on his name, Brendan, um, and he said that they could, they can get the color that we need, the green. I picked out the color already if I get your approval, so.
Awesome. I, I love when technology makes it easier for all of us.
Exactly.
Yeah, I just, you know, I mean, I, we need to kind of get the stigma off of mental health, you know, and, and get people to talk about it, not fearful of talking about it. Myself and, and Amy Warfield had the chance last month, maybe it was January, I forget, to talk to, uh, some high school students just about, you know, civics and local politics. And, you know, they, they, they kind of asked, you know, you know, who, who we talk to if we're, if we're concerned and don't wanna be talking to, you know, um, guidance counselors. And, you know, and said, Youth and Family Service? You know, don't be afraid to, to, you know, talk about it, you know? I mean, nobody, nobody's normal. You know, and the concept of normal, I think, can be a dangerous thing for a lot of folks. You know, and it makes you feel like you're maybe outcast or on the outside or that you're the only person feeling a certain way. You know, and I just, you know, not to usurp the time here, but, you know, just wanna encourage folks if you, if you need to talk to somebody, you know, there are people in town who are available to listen. So thank you for everything that you do, and I, I support this a hundred and ten percent.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christine, I didn't mean to imply that when I asked them to, to stay on the, on the agenda, it just, I wanted to keep you around a little bit longer, because we never see you, so. I, I apologize for that. But yeah, it, it, just listening to your comments, uh, it's, it's quite distressing that, first of all, that our children are having these mental health issues. And then, secondly, the healthcare system that we so pride ourselves on can't, um, take care of them.
Right.
And, um, you know, uh, oh, this week in May, the, the second through the eighth is important, but, um, it, it's certainly not enough. But there aren't enough weeks in the whole year to take care of all of our needs. And I think we forget that also, but, uh, yes, I certainly support this, and, um, thank you for, for spearheading it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Mr. Marandy, Mr. Runyon? Mr. Runyon?
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, you, you, you may have noticed that the common is currently, illuminated in blue, and that is for the, uh, I, I think it's, I believe it's Autism Awareness, uh, Month out there. And, uh, I, I know we've certainly, um, you guys will, will recall the purple pinwheels, uh, that we've, uh, allowed to be displayed in front of some of our, our town buildings for, uh, the Child Abuse Awareness, uh, program as well. So this is certainly, uh, in line with, uh, historically what we've, uh, done here in town. And Christine, I would enthusiastically support, uh, the, the lighting of the, the common in the building at Thirty-three Center Street.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Randy, no, okay. Christine, real quick, uh, I, I, obviously, I'll support this a hundred percent. Because of the caseload you're talking about, you know, everything's doubled, and we have all, how's your staff holding?
They're managing. They're a little burnt, and, you know, this is, this is not, it's not been easy. And, um, we're in the process of re, of replacing a, a position, so we've got that piece. But, um, we're managing, and just like any, most of the mental health clinicians in the state, we're all managing, so.
You guys do an unbelievable job, and a lot of people don't know what your, your office does, but I wanna thank you, because you do so much for the residents, that a lot of, a lot of people aren't even aware of, because they don't necessarily, you know, use that, all your services, but trust me, when, when someone needs it, you, you guys are, and girls are, are right there, and.
Thank you.
So with that being said, I'm looking, yes, Mr. Marandy?
Listen, the only reason I didn't have a comment is everyone said everything fantastic. I couldn't, I couldn't think in my head fast enough to say anything great, because you've done such a great job. And yes, I'm a hundred and ten percent behind you.
Thank you.
That's why I was shaking my head. I don't know what I'm gonna say. Do a wonderful job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it? All right. Uh, that being said, um, looking, I'm looking for a motion to approve this for May?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we support, approve supporting the, uh, uh, lighting of the common and, uh, the Youth and Family Service Building in green for Children's Mental Health Awareness, uh, Week in May, May second through May eighth.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Second is Joe. Mr. Marandy, second to that. Okay, we'll have to do a vote, roll call vote to approve this. So I will start with, by Shia Priest.
Yes.
Hogan?
Yes.
Runyon?
Yes.
Marandy?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so, uh, Christine, five-zero?
Thank you so much.
Let us know.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye now.
Christine, drive careful.
Will do. Thank you.
Okay, back to our agenda items.
Yeah, I'm gonna get to you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for jumping in on that.
That's okay. Nope. Then, um, being said, we'll go back to our agenda, item eighty-three, which are the, it's a continued, I'm sorry, no, eighty-four, eighty-four, which is a continued public hearing regarding alcohol rules and regulations and the alcohol server policy. Who would like to start with this? Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, the, these are a couple of items that I've, uh, introduced when we first started talking about this, uh, a few minutes ago. Uh, the two big ones are, uh, a reduce, a reduction of the minimum number of seats required in order to qualify for an all-alcohol license. We've all had the discussions, and we all know that, um, w- when you, when you have a number like a hundred and twenty, you're kind of restricting a certain, or a, a wide range of potential clients who might like to come to Burlington, like ExGolf, but can't put a hundred and twenty seats in the place. So I'm, I'm gonna be looking for recommendations and a consensus, uh, uh, on this, at least this and the, uh, changing of the wording of the policy, uh, so we can start that ball rolling. So, um, as I
So as I mentioned, adding some wording to the definition of what an all-purpose kitchen is by saying that if it's an entertainment slash experiential venue, then the food product is not going to be cooked from scratch for a hundred and twenty people. It's a smaller venue. And the food they have is not meant to be eaten as if it was a fancy restaurant. They're going to be up, talking, moving around, playing golf, and snacking and eating, you know, while they're doing that or waiting. So those are, those are two items that I think I would like to see us address at least tonight.
All right, thank you. Mr. Morandi, you were the other, you're the other rep on the Alcohol Subcommittee. Did you want to chime in?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just have a couple of things. So first of all, as far as Bob's, Bob's one hundred is right, we need to change, we need to change a couple of things on, on the wording itself. That, that will all work out. My, my biggest concern are the numbers. What are we, what are we going to get down to? Are we going to go down to forty? We going to twenty? Does it have to be two different numbers for, one for full alcohol license, one for malt beer? What's the difference? It's alcohol either way. Can it be the same number? Those are the questions I have. And I'm fine with whatever the board wants to go along with. Me personally, my personal opinion is thirty and thirty works for me. I don't understand why there has to be a separation between the two. You're going to have a drink, you're going to have a drink, whether it's a beer or a full alcohol license, but I don't understand the difference. So that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Mr. Randy. Okay. Mr. Runyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A little slow with the mouse. Bear with me, though. You know, the, certainly during COVID here, we've, we've come to realize just how important our, our restaurants and hotels and, and so forth are, our operating budgets, not to mention the convenience of making available these types of venues to our residents and the folks that work here. I think it's long overdue that we make some adjustments to our policy. We, we're, we're hearing from property owners that, you know, they, under the current rules, they, you know, they really can't entice folks to, to take some of the space that they're offering here in town. So I'm certainly willing to entertain that number, whether it's, you know, thirty or forty or whatever that number is. I think the, the application before us, just the golf applicant, is a good example of the vetting process that this board takes with each individual applicant. And I, I have all the confidence in the world that by just reducing the, the minimum amount of seating is not going to, you know, you know, have Burlington fall into a, you know, a bad, a bad place. I think we can stay on top of it with the, with the process that we have in place in issuing the licenses. So let me just say that, yes, I'm, I'm in, I'm in full support of decreasing that number, whatever it may be.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to ask a question to, to Mr. Morandi's point. You know, is there a historical reason as to why all alcohol licenses carry a higher seat capacity? I mean, I can make inferences based on, you know, them going to what is traditionally presumed as restaurants. But beyond that, does anybody have any insight on that?
Mr. Hogan?
I don't know if I have an accurate one, Nick, but it's the consensus across the state that, first of all, an all-alcohol license is going to cost more. So you're going to have a higher number to justify paying the extra money. And a lot of people, you know, only want to have a beer and wine. And that's their model, like the, the restaurant we did earlier. And, you know, shouldn't, you know, they should be allowed to have, have a smaller expense when it comes to starting the restaurant. So you, you know, if you're having a smaller restaurant, you're going to have a smaller minimum. You have the, the beer and wine, it's going to cost you less. So, you know, I don't think there's anything that I can look up that's going to give us an answer. But historically, that seems to be what's happened across the state.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan.
Yeah, no, I am not sure I have any other questions. I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this as well. You know what I mean? I'm, I'm open to discussing. I think zero, zero to start. Like I mentioned in my last, but with this, I think it's probably too much just at the onset, you know, I like to, you know, test the waters, if you will. You know, and I, I mean, if we did want to do a split, you know, I could do like a, I mean, I'm thinking like, I'd be like a twenty, forty, somewhere in that area. I mean, we're hovering around that thirty, thirty, you know, idea. So it's not like we're, we're far off. And I know we've discussed numbers in this range the last time we met. So, I mean, I'm in favor of it, and I'm open to discussing, you know, exactly what those numbers are going to be. But yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. My, my thoughts on this, I originally said zero, zero only, not zero, zero. I said zero for wine and beer. Because the towns around us had that, they don't have a minimum, but looking, you know, I have to do a little more research. Obviously, the all-alcohol license has to be reduced, should be reduced. But I'm, I'm thinking about the physical space. We, we're trying to get restaurants into the, say, for example, shops at Simons Park. And those individual businesses aren't very big. So to get a restaurant in there that wants beer and wine, I've gone back and forth with the numbers. Joe, I like, I like your number, the all-alcohol, but I think the beer and wine, to get a restaurant to, to function profitably, maybe low, my, this is my opinion, I'd say for beer and wine, ten. But that's just, I'm just throwing a number out there, but I think it should definitely be lower, only because, again, the physical space is going to make smaller, allow for smaller people, because we, that's, that's ten patrons. We also have to count for the employees and whatnot, and not every space can handle. And I've gone, I, I love family restaurants. I love, obviously, I love restaurants. But a family restaurant, you get it, you know, and they're smaller, they're more, they're friendlier, they're, they're, you know, and to lock us into a high number, I'd rather start with a low number. Again, it's a policy, we can change it. Mr. Morandi, I like your thirty, but I, I, I'm just throwing the ten out there as beer and wine for me because of the physical size. Yes, Mr. Morandi?
Thank you, Jimmy. Jimmy, you're getting brought up a really good point. So that, that number ten, I personally think if we want to go with a number on that, no one's going to open up a restaurant with ten seats. The overhead, the food costs, the, the tables, the linens, the dishes, that, who's going to have a ten-person restaurant? That, that brings us down to, and no offense to sub-shops or anything else, there's ten people that can sit in a sub-shop. So now they can bring them in. So now everyone's going to go in for it. So are we trying to limit this to just restaurants? Or are we going to bring this into the, where if it's zero, zero, then we, we bring ourselves to the point of like, the old place was down the center, what was it called? Burlington Coal Cut. You know, they had eight, nine, ten, they, they probably had ten seats and they had probably fifteen seats. So now they're going to bring in full alcohol licenses. Is that what we're looking for? I'm, I'm more looking for restaurants, like, not that there's not a restaurant, no one takes that the wrong way. I'm looking for a sit-down, serving, someone's serving me alcohol, someone's serving me my food, bringing it over to me. So I would go with the number twenty for beer and wine and thirty for a full alcohol license. I think that those two numbers would work great for us. Mr. Hogan has a lot of input on the wording aspect of it. So my thing, when I brought this up three meetings ago, was more the wording of it than it was, I'm not saying, more the number of it than it was the wording aspect of it.
All set, Joe?
Yeah, I'm got it right, right now.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi. Again, like I said, I threw ten out there as a number. I have no issue with twenty, thirty, twenty at all. Again, this is, we're going back and forth on numbers, and it's great to have all these ideas and this input. So I, I like that thirty and twenty is good with me. So what we need to do, I'm just trying to think, are we looking to approve this tonight? Yes, Mr. Morandi?
I'm just going to ask a question when you're done. That's all, when you're, when you're finished.
I, I believe, are we, are we looking to approve this tonight, the policy and the numbers? That's what we have.
I would say yes. Mr. Chairman, I would say if we have these two items that we can come to a consensus, I would say yes.
Okay.
And if there's more items we wanted to get into, we can do that at our next meeting.
Okay, so. Yes, Mr. Morandi.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me ask a quick question. Twenty, thirty. Beer and wine, twenty. All alcohol highs, thirty. Just, just put your hand up, you're in favor of it or against it. If you're in favor of it, put your hand up.
Just, yeah, make the motion, Joe.
Joe, make the motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we change the seating capacities to beer and wine for twenty and all alcohol for thirty.
Okay, Mr. Morandi made the motion. Mr. Hogan seconded it. We have to do a roll call. One quick question.
Mr. Chairman.
This is a public hearing.
Yeah, public hearing, sir.
Public before we take a vote.
Yes, please.
Okay, so that being the case, do I have anybody from the public who would like to comment on this before we go any further? Mr. Sagarino and Mrs. McDonough, are we getting anything?
I don't see any selectmen tickets.
I don't see anything.
Okay, that being said, we will, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, Mr. Morandi made the motion. Mr. Runyon seconded it. We have to do a roll call vote. Vice Chair Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
And Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, five zero to close the public hearing. So now, with regards to Mr. Morandi's motion of thirty, twenty, thirty all alcohol, twenty beer and wine, and Mr. Hogan seconded that, we'll take a roll call vote for that. Vice Chair Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Mr. Morandi.
Yes.
And the chair is yes. So five zero, thirty all alcohol, twenty beer and wine. Okay, Mr. Sagarino, did you have any comment on that item?
No, sir.
Okay. All right. That one is done. So now we're on to Agenda Item eighty-five, which is also a continued public hearing. This is approval for a Class Two license for online businesses, K and K internet sales. There's the proponent here.
Yes, she is. Good evening.
Okay.
Hello.
Okay, before I ask, Virginia, before I, we go for that this is a public hearing, I'm going to ask any of the board members if they have any questions regarding this.
I do, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes, Virginia.
Yes.
Who is the K and K?
K and K is my maiden name. Well, the initials of my maiden name.
Okay, K and K?
Yeah.
What is the, the two Ks?
Well, I, I just try to be original, and I, Klein was my maiden name, so I just did K and K. And Christina, my daughter's name, so Klein and Christina.
Okay. Well, who's, who's the KA Ventures, or KAV Enterprises? Who's KAV?
Nobody.
How did you come up with that name for your email?
That's just my email that I use.
Who is Sarkis Kavlikian?
He's, he's in my fiance.
Okay. And he's not going to have anything to do with any of the business?
Uh, no.
Or any of the information that comes through from individuals in the house, in as far as the information you get on the sale of vehicles and the purchase of vehicles?
Correct.
He's not, he's not going to have any access to any of that information?
Uh, no.
How do we know that?
Because, because I'm saying no.
To the board, for those who don't know, Mr. Kavlikian has a history, and a Cory check should have been done on him, I think. Because he's going to have access to this information. And I'm not going to say it here, but there, there's a reason a Cory check, I think, should be done on him if he has access to this information.
Well, he's, he's not going to have access, just to clarify.
So you're telling us we, we can't do a Cory check on him?
No, because this is irrelevant.
Oh, I would disagree.
Well, he doesn't reside here, so I'm not sure what the issue is.
He's not residing in Burlington?
No, he has two premises.
And where is he residing?
Winchester.
Okay. I would, I would not be in favor of approving this at this time, Mr. Chairman.
You're on mute, Jim.
Mr. Hogan.
Mr. Chair.
Any other members want to chime in on this? Mr. Runyon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. At, at our last meeting, I had expressed my concerns regarding the, these internet sales here in Burlington and how I, I felt that the, the folks who are doing business in Burlington with the brick and mortar properties and paying property taxes and so forth would be, in my opinion, would be, you know, harmed by us continuing to issue these licenses for, for online sellers. I don't like the, the idea at all. I disapproved of a, a previous applicant that was, before, it was not too long ago for a similar license. So I'm going to be consistent and be voting in opposition of this request tonight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Runyon. Mr. Morandi?
I'm kind of a little bit, I don't know what to say. I, I'm, I'm not ready to approve this tonight. I'd like to find out more of what, what has just been talked about. I, I don't know. The information will be at her house, it will be on a computer. I don't know if he has access to that computer. I don't know what's going on. I really am not ready to make it. I'm not ready to vote on this tonight.
All right. So I'm trying to think, this is a public hearing. I'm going to, Nick, I don't want to exclude you. Did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, just quickly, and then I know we can keep this moving. So I, I personally have no issue with you with the idea of online car sales. I think that, you know, it's, you know, it's not like she's starting a Carvana or anything like that. You know, I, I guess, you know, Southern Hogan kind of played out the first half of the Columbo episode, and I'd like to understand more from a legal perspective, you know, what, what the law is around running a, a online, you know, operation from your home and, you know, what our standing is with, you know, access to information. I mean, not knowing what's going on here, you know, just the ominousness of it. I'd like to have you in the conversation, and this is obviously no offense to you, Virginia. You know, just want to, you know, gain, gain some further insight here. You know, but, but again, like, I personally have no issue with the, with the concept of what you're trying to do here. So, you know, pending what's, what's happening over here with Southern Hogan. You know, again, I see no issue with it, but that's you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. Virginia?
Yep. Yep.
Real quick, did you want to say something?
No, I just wanted to reiterate that, um, you know, this is something that I'm doing and, you know, he has no involvement, so, and, um, he wouldn't have access to my information. I mean, I've been doing this for, I've been active with this for the past year, but prior to that, before, when I was residing in Rhode Island, I was much more active back then, and this was prior to me knowing Mr. Kavlikian.
Virginia, you have a quick question. Uh, you were selling cars in Rhode Island?
Uh, yes, on and off.
All right, um, I believe there's just too many unanswered questions at this point to even try to render a decision. There's a lot of questions that need to be addressed, a few things that we should probably, uh, discuss not in, online like this. But I will open up this up to the public if they have any questions, uh, or comments. Is anybody from the public who wants to discuss this matter? Mr. Sagrino, we seen anybody?
Uh, no.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna suggest that we continue this, uh, public hearing to our next, to a future meeting. And if that's the case, then I'd ask Betty to give us a date that's available.
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, if I may, is there, you know, I know this is a public hearing, is there, uh, a way for us to, uh, gather questions or, uh, you know, further gain some insight between now and our next hearings that we're not just repeating ourselves?
Yeah, that's why I think we should use this time is to do our due diligence and make sure that, uh, we do everything right and, and just try to get answers to some questions that we may have. So I'll entertain, Betty, um, when's our, I know our next meeting is the twenty-sixth, would that be too hectic of a schedule?
I would have to ask, I would look to you gentlemen to see what you think, if two weeks is enough.
Gentlemen, I'm putting it out there, looking for a, a motion to continue to a time certain. We got a motion for that?
Two, two weeks doesn't, doesn't do, doesn't hurt me. I mean, I, I've got the information now, so that wouldn't be an issue going beyond two weeks.
All right, let's just go to April twenty-sixth at six thirty.
All right, we have six thirty already?
Yes, that's, it'll be at or after six thirty, that'll be a typical.
All right, so Mr. Hogan has made a motion to continue this matter.
I'll second it, Jim.
Sixth and seconded by Mr. Marandy, to continue to, uh, April twenty-sixth, at or after six thirty P M. So that being the case, I'll take a roll call vote on the motion to continue. Uh, Vice Chair Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Marandy.
Yes.
Mr. Runyon.
Yes.
Okay, and the chair is a yes, so we'll continue this matter till April twenty, I'm sorry, yeah, April twenty-sixth.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Believe we're on Agenda Item zero eighty-seven, a proclamation. Okay, we have a proclamation. I want, I don't want to say recognized, but observed the one hundred and sixth Armenian genocide. Uh, Mr. Sagrino, does this need to be read in order to be approved?
Uh, typically, that's, that's how I've seen the board do it in the past.
Okay, um, in, in our materials, it's on page one thirty-seven, is, uh, is there a member that would like to read this into the record?
I don't have it in front of me, so.
Okay.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to do it, Mr. Chairman, I just didn't know if anybody else was feeling peakish about reading this evening.
Nick, uh, defer to you again, then.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, so the, the Town of Burlington, uh, Board Selectmen, uh, proclamation, whereas Armenians fled increasing oppression from the Ottoman government during the twentieth century, coming to America in search of freedom where they could live in dignity without fear and oppression. And whereas, like many ethnic groups, Armenians settled in Burlington seeking a safe place to live, raise their families, practice their religion, educate their children, they became an asset to the growth and vitality of the town of Burlington through their strong work ethic, family values, and civic pride. And whereas the Armenian community of Burlington is comprised of children, grandchildren, and great-grandchildren, are the survivors of the Armenian genocide. And whereas one point five million Armenian men, women, and children, victims of genocide, perished in the Ottoman Empire from nineteen fifteen to nineteen twenty-three. Therefore, the town of Burlington does hereby issue this proclamation in remembrance of the Armenian genocide of nineteen fifteen, and encourage residents to take part in the observance of Armenian genocide Memorial Day on April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one, given this twelfth day of April, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, Mr. Priest. So that's the proclamation before is for, uh, for, I guess we approved the proclamation. Do I have a motion to, or Mr. Sagrino, does this need to be approved?
Uh, yes, sir, if you wouldn't mind approving it, and then we have a signed copy here in the office for the board members to come in and sign.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion to approve as, uh, Selectman Priest has read.
So moved.
I second.
I second, Mr. Hogan. Um, okay, roll call vote. Mr. Vice Chair Priest.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so five zero on the proclamation for the one hundred and sixth anniversary of the Armenian genocide. Agenda Item eighty-eight, approval for the town administrator's signatory. Mr. Hogan, I believe, were you the, um, originator of this? Or?
No.
No? Mr. Sagrino?
No.
Yeah, I'll just, um, a couple of meetings ago, um, the issue came up when we were dealing with the grant of location on the emergency telephone poles when they're damaged. Uh, the board had requested we look into, uh, putting it onto a vote, so if there were any emergencies that I could sign off on, uh, moving the pole within the right of way. Um, as opposed to, I know that we recently had a couple of cases where the petitioner came in for permission in the board, and the pole had already been moved, so, uh, this was a request of, I don't recall which board member, but, uh, Betty, Betty remembered to put it on the agenda, so, Selectman Marandy.
All right, well, I apologize, I thought that was you, Joe, I apologize, because, uh, it was Bob. Mr. Marandy, did you want to speak on this at all, or has Mr. Sagrino's, uh, done a good job?
No, Paul did a fantastic job. I was glad to hear from him finally tonight. He's been sitting over there, very quiet and doing his thing. I think he's having a pizza or something, I don't know. But no, this was something that, the last time it was right down the street off of, uh, off of, uh, the, the big road, right down the street here, we had the pole moved prior, prior to it being permitted. So we came up with the thing, and I said, why don't we just have Paul do it, or move the pole that were there if it's, it was just easier for us. So, try to make life easy for everybody.
That's fine. The chair, um, the town council is reviewing it, and she's putting some words together. Because, um, because of our laws, there are certain things that the town administrator is able to do, but we just want to make sure that this is one of the things that he could do, um, taking care of emergency things, and then we vote on it at the following meeting. That makes sense?
Are you suggesting we continue this?
Yes, yeah.
All right, so that being said, I'll take, um, anybody else want to chime in before we do that? Okay, uh, I'll take a motion to continue this item till our next meeting?
I'll, I'll make a motion to continue it till the April twenty-sixth meeting. Betty, what time? Anytime there.
It doesn't matter.
After six thirty?
Yeah, we'll do that at the end of the meeting, probably.
Okay.
Do I have a second? Second by Bob. Okay, roll call vote, uh, to continue this. Uh, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so five zero, we continue this to our next meeting. The next item on the agenda is approval of the twenty twenty-two budgets. Uh, Mr. Sagrino?
No, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, we have the final budgets for the board to approve tonight. Uh, we'll have, um, John Denizio and Whitney Haskell here, uh, to present and answer any questions the board members may have.
Mr. Denizio, the floor is yours, and Whitney as well.
Whitney's gonna take, uh, take this as she has before.
Okay. Whitney, we're all ready for you.
Okay, Mr. Chair, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, I can, yep.
Okay, I'll just go, um, in the order that they're listed on the agenda. Um, so with, um, the reserve fund. So, um, as you all probably know, the Ways and Means Reserve Fund, um, is appropriated to to cover any unforeseen needs that come up during the course of the fiscal year. So we typically budget it at two hundred thousand at the beginning of the fiscal year in the operating budget, and then once free cash is certified, um, we come back in January and, and bump it up to three hundred thousand and replenish any expenditures that were made um, during that time, and, uh, any expenditure from this account requires a majority vote of Ways and Means. Pretty typical, same every year, um, just have to cross our t's and dot our i's.
Okay. Uh, what you got, we're gonna vote all these to as one? Or, Mr. Sagrino, should we just vote them all as one?
Uh, whatever the board's preference, but I think the way we did it last time was, yeah, you read off a list and, uh, selectmen could hold budgets. Um, so if, we could probably go through Whitney's presentations, uh, answer any questions, and then you could try to vote them for one, and then if anyone can set one aside to be voted separately if they have further, uh, questions.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Uh, Whitney, Middlesex Retirement?
Okay, so Middlesex Retirement is the town's assessment to the Middlesex Retirement System, which provides benefits to town employees as required by national law and accumulates assets to fund future benefits for our current employees. As I said, this is an assessment, um, from the system, so it's actuarially determined, and then we just pay the assessment each year.
Okay, uh, negotiated settlements? Oh, sorry, Bob, sorry, Bob, you want to go?
Just, just a comment from either Paul or John. Um, is, is this not, um, funded by the employees themselves? Similar to what social security would be taken out of our pay?
Well, most, um, employees at this point, our most recent, um, hires, going back to when I started with the town, so not very recent, uh, currently pay between nine and eleven percent of their pay, uh, towards the pension. Uh, the town does have a share that they have to contribute to that, uh, but really, one of the largest, um, the largest components of the actual assessment is, is sort of what we're paying for the sins of the past. So when the, the town set up the pension fund many years ago, uh, we didn't set, like every other town in the Commonwealth, we didn't set aside uh, money for the future, they ran the pension system as pay as you go, so whatever pensions were paid out, the town just forwarded that money, and, uh, we never sort of, um, took into account, uh, all the obligations for the future, so, um, and again, we're not unique in that, in that regard, every, every community, probably every community in the country was the same thing, and including private businesses where uh, they funded their pensions on a pay as you go, so there's really, uh, a couple of components there, the employees pay a portion.
I was just gonna say, just to comment, um, the eleven percent is almost twice what the town would have to pay if we were under a social security system. So the employees would only have to pay six percent if we were under social security, the town would have a much bigger nut to have to pay. So the employees are, are, are paying off a larger chunk of that retirement, uh, than if we were under social security, so I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Uh, anybody else have a question on the Middlesex Retirement? No? Oh, Michael?
I, I, I think this is one of those thorny issues, Jim, where, where the majority of the board here is, uh, participates in, in that, uh, pension system, and I think we need to, uh, we can't, obviously can't all abstain on that, so I think it's the, uh, Paul, what's the, uh, out of necessity? We, uh, okay, have an opinion on that?
Um, I'm not sure if, um, anybody has a material interest in this. I know in the past that we've always just voted it. But whatever, whatever is the board's pleasure, or we could kick that, kick that one out to four twenty-six and get an answer from legal counsel, if, if that, uh, makes more sense.
You know what, I, Paul, I think, I think we should take, uh, uh, take that road and postpone this one till our next meeting and get an opinion.
Absolutely.
Okay, so we're, we're gonna postpone Middlesex Retirement. Uh, just real quick, if I remember correctly, a similar issue came up with regards to, uh, health insurance, and we were all allowed to vote on that because we all, we all got that as a benefit, one way or the other, but, um, okay, I, I think if you want to postpone it, and then we'll get a, a legal answer on that. Whitney, negotiated settlements?
Okay, so negotiated settlements, um, funds the cost incurred through settlements of collective bargaining or employee contracts. Um, so as you know, probably, when a contract is settled, a transfer is made from this account into the responding department. Um, this year, I believe we have fire, A and P, and the part-time plan that can be settled.
Members of the board, any questions on negotiated settlements? I'm not seeing any. Uh, stabilization is flatline zero. Whitney, did you want to chime in on that, or just let that one?
Yeah, um, so that, that's sort of like a placeholder, we haven't used it in that capacity in a while. Uh, we fund stabilization usually through a warrant article, so since it's a zero, um, amount, it does not require a vote.
All right, uh, any comments on that one? Okay, next one, local transportation, Whitney.
Um, so local transportation, uh, was formerly the source for, uh, the Beeline contract. Um, as you know, now we are participating in a ride-share subsidy program, so this count will now be used to fund that program. Um, the request, as you can see, this year is down from a hundred and twenty thousand last year for Beeline to fifty thousand this year to fund that program.
Okay, uh, gentlemen, any questions on local transportation? Not seeing any, I'll have Whitney move on to capital budget.
Okay, capital budget, so this is, um, a line that is used right now, at least, to fund um, the second year of a five-year, uh, lease purchase agreement, um, that MIS has entered for technology infrastructure, um, as well as cybersecurity improvements. So it's in the operating budget because it's sort of, uh, exemplifies a continuing, uh, desire to invest in those items.
Okay, any questions on, uh, capital budget? All right, gentlemen, I'll take, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve other accounts with the exception of Middlesex Retirement. And one of them is one.
I think we skipped one.
Which one?
Uh, debt service, I think we started with reserve.
I'm going by other accounts.
Yeah, it's a different one.
Yeah, this is, uh, other accounts. There are six, six subcategories under other accounts. We're gonna, there's, we'll to approve five of them, exclude Middlesex Retirement, so if I can have a motion to approve other accounts as it's in the backup.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman, as you said, we'll hold the Middlesex Retirement.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Marandy's the second. Okay, roll call vote to approve other accounts minus the Middlesex Retirement. Uh, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Marandy?
Yes.
And the chair is a yes, so that one's five zero. Okay, Whitney, on to the next one.
Okay, I'll do debt service next, is that?
Okay, that's good.
Okay, um, so as you know, this budget includes the principal and interest payment for existing debt as well as projects scheduled on the capital plan for borrowing. Not much shown right there.
All right, uh, gentlemen, any questions regarding seven ten, debt service?
Not, Mr. Chairman, not so much on the amount, but, uh, John or Paul, what's the percentage of debt that we're carrying right now?
I don't have it in front of me, uh, Selectman Hogan, but I do believe it, it is, um, probably in the five percent range. John, do you have that, uh, spreadsheet in front of you?
Yeah, I've just blown it up now, but.
Okay.
It's around that same number, but I'll get it in.
All right, that, that's fine, that's, as long as we're in that ballpark. Now, that's. All right, that, that's fine, that's as long as we're in that ballpark. Now, that's, that's, that's a good number, right?
Yes, I would say that it's a strong investment, but it's um, in terms of what our uh, credit rating is, it's, we're spending less than other people with the same uh, credit rating. But I think the board knows that we've been uh, making substantial investments in, in the infrastructure, so. Um, it, that number's gonna, gonna rise. Don't forget, we have DPW construction ongoing. I believe the schools are probably gonna be pretty close to getting approval for one of their projects, so we'll be layering on some additional uh, debt in the upcoming years and it's all built into the plan.
All right, are we gonna give uh, Mike Kent a kiss goodbye and tell him we're gonna have a new police station eventually?
We will have a new police station eventually, um, and again, it's probably sooner than we all think, probably not as uh, soon as Chief Kent would like, but it's certainly in the, the nearer future than the far, than the far future.
All right, John, you don't have to keep looking, that's okay, that, that number's okay.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Hogan. Uh, Joe, Nick, Mike, anybody? Nope, okay, um, that being the case, I'll entertain a motion to approve item, uh, budget item seven-ten debt service.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Chairman, I'll make the uh, motion that we approve the uh, debt service for six million, seven hundred and seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Okay, do I have a second? Mr. Morandi? Okay, roll call vote to approve this. Uh, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair's a yes. Okay, Whitney, how about historical?
Okay, historical is six ninety-one. Um, their overall budget, there's no, uh, there's no budget here, it's expense budget only and overall budget is down uh, by one point five eight percent. And that's just because um, due to the nature of the work that they do, they pick different projects each year that have different costs, so there's a little bit of swing from year to year depending on what projects they're, they're looking to do.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions on the historical commission budget? Being none, I, I will put this budget to a vote. Anybody wanna make a motion to approve the historical commission budget? Mike, Mr. Runyon, second is Mr. Morandi. Roll call vote, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair's a yes. Okay, Whitney, it's five-zero, Betty, I'm sorry. Uh, Whitney, if I'm not mistaken, I believe Board of Appeals is the last one.
Correct.
Okay, fire away.
So Board of Appeals, again, another simple one, level funded from last year. Nothing uh, extraordinary to report there.
Okay, gentlemen, any questions on this one? Seeing none?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Mr. Morandi, second by Mr. Hogan. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, Mr. Priest?
Yes.
Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair's a yes, five-zero for the uh, Board of Appeals. Uh, Whitney, is that it?
That's it for me, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Whitney, thank you, John. All right, next item is approval of the town meeting list of articles. Not individual, we're not voting individual, this is just to get the articles on the warrant. So we're just voting to approve the list for the meet, for the, Tommy. Not the content or, or uh, dollar amount of each one, this is just to get it on the warrant. Any discussion on this one? Mr. Runyon?
All right, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I have to uh, I have to point out uh, under the general bylaw articles, uh, item thirty, it's uh, directly related to the Board of Selectment. I uh, I, I really not opposed necessarily to the, the uh, bylaw itself, but what I do object to is the backup material that was provided in uh, with, along with that article. As we all know, that uh, backup material usually uh, is accompanied by accurate data, facts, and sometimes legal opinion. Uh, this particular bylaw article is um, it is full of misinformation and personal opinion. Um, I, I believe it needs to be rewritten and um, but I, I cannot uh, approve it as uh, as, has been submitted.
Okay, um, Mr. Actually, Betty or Mr. Sagrino, if we excluded that one on a vote, would we still be in time for the town meeting, meet the deadline? If we push that one off to, for two weeks?
We, we've had, um, we've had, uh, the selectmen have the ability to add articles on, on an emergency basis in the bylaws, which we've had to do a couple times over the past year, so.
So it would not be an issue if we voted to put these on the warrant and hold uh, general bylaw thirty?
Yes, that's fine.
Does, sorry, does, does this constitute an emergency use? Or i- is there anything in the bylaw that says, like, I don't wanna be using an emergency use if it's not, if it's not emergency?
No, I, as I recall, I think it was pretty broad that just said if the selectmen basically feel it's important uh, enough to add it on. Uh, but again, this is, this would just be placing it on the warrant. Uh, you'd have an opportunity to vote up or down um, at a future meeting uh, as to whether or not you agree with that article. And obviously, you'd have the ability to present um, backup at town meeting in terms of um, anything that the board may disagree with.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may for, for a moment, um, you know, while I take some, some stock issue with the phrasing of, of, of some of it, um, you know, I think that the process is the process and that, you know, if, if, you know, a town meeting member wants a warrant article there, and it's not egregious, that, you know, it's, it's up to us to defend it or oppose it, uh, if you will, uh, at town meeting. Or at least, you know, I mean, if we wanna take this up at another meeting, you know, amongst ourselves, uh, you know, I'm, I'm open to that. I, I, I mean, I don't wanna, you know, I guess go stepping on, on the, 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 the writing process of, you know, town meeting members to, uh, even though it directly involves us, um, I guess, you know, so. Forgive me for toeing the line a little bit, I just wanna make sure that we're not, you know, uh, pulling it just because we're, we're mad at it.
Well, just to remember, we are approving just the list. So as we move forward, we'll be approving the, 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 the guts of each article. So you can decide what you want to do with the backup, whether you want to, we may go there or have a continued discussion with a proponent, but you can approve the list.
Okay, so it's, so it seems to approve the list per se and not necessarily, or, or I should say, follow up with individual articles as we would prefer?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon, uh, would you be comfortable approving the list as presented? Then we can attack, uh, uh, you know, issue as, as, as we talk about it. I just wanna make sure you're comfortable with it.
I, I'm, um, Jim, I don't wanna hold up the process here, I, I just wanna voice, I wanna make it perfectly clear that I, I am extremely unhappy with the backup material that was presented with this article and I wanted an opportunity uh, for the board, or at least myself anyhow, to uh, uh, have, at least have a rebuttal to the, to what, what's submitted with that article.
Okay.
No, I'll go along with, you know, I'll go along with submitting the thing and if we have an opportunity to uh, add our own comment to the backup material, I'm okay with that.
Well, I'm sure we will because we will be addressing these individually at some point uh, prior to town meeting. So I think that might be a better option right there, uh, but right now, this is just to get them on the warrant. Uh, Mr. Sagrino, correct me if I'm wrong, is that something we can do? We will be able to address each one individually at a future meeting?
Yes, that's uh, w- w- our intention is to, that would be the next meeting. Uh, we'd start to take up the articles individually. We only have technically, I think, two meetings until town meeting after tonight. So we'll have two opportunities to get through the warrant articles and again, the board can clearly uh, provide uh, backup of their own for an article at town meeting as well.
All right, then I will suggest, at least on my part, to do some homework with regards to the wording on the backup and uh, we'll, we'll uh, take it from there. Any other questions, concerns, or comments? Yes, Mr. Priest?
I just had a question, uh, probably for Paul around financial article, where'd it go? I lost it. Eighteen, the small cell peer review. I noticed the dollar amount was a hundred thousand dollars set for that. Was that, was that recommended by Donald Brewer? Or did we just pick like a number, we rounded up knowing that the peer review was gonna be fairly costly?
No, i- it's a placeholder right now. Um, again, I, I'm not sure what the right amount is, but as you know from our public hearing process, um, there was a desire by some members of the community to uh, provide some follow-up testing and things of that nature. Uh, we don't, we don't have that budgeted. Uh, so I think that, you know, we'll have to make a pitch to town meeting in terms of what we intend to use that money for, RF engineer type issues. Um, but again, if, if um, we put it as a placeholder, we wanted to meet the deadline and again, it was based upon hearing uh, the discussion uh, during our, our most recent small cell hearings as to whether or not we may, cause we, we, we have a small amount uh, for uh, the RF engineer currently and Attorney Brewer, uh, but if we're gonna expand uh, what we do with the small cells and we're gonna need a funding source.
Great, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Paul. Um, so basically, we were voting to make this a, a whole bunch of placeholders, if I'm not mistaken. And um, any other questions or comments before we vote this, just to put it on the warrant? All right, being none, I'll take a motion to approve um, the town meeting list of articles, just a list of articles for the warrant.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Sure.
All right, I have a motion by Nick, a second by Mr. Hogan. We'll uh, we'll do a roll call vote, uh, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair's a yes, so five-zero to approve the list. About the court. Okay. Now, moving on to minutes. Has everybody, everybody had a chance to review the minutes? And Betty, are they all in order? We can approve them all at once?
Yes, unless somebody sees something that's incorrect in one of them.
So unless there is something that someone needs to discuss or thinks should be discussed, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-second, March eighth, and March fifteenth, the extra session.
So moved.
Michael, do you second it? All right, Mr. Morandi moved it and selectman Runyon seconded it. Okay, I'll take a roll call vote, Vice Chair Priest?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes.
Mr. Runyon?
Yes.
And Mr. Morandi?
Yes.
And the chair's a yes, five-zero, Betty, on all the minutes. Uh, subcommittee reports, we'll start with uh, Vice Chair Priest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll try to keep these brief, I know that that's a loaded thing that I say. So just a couple of quick things, uh, you all uh, received uh, over the last uh, the cybersecurity policy as presented uh, through ISAC. Uh, it's very um, detailed and uh, comprehensive and I appreciate uh, the committee's efforts there. I know that Paul is working uh, to determine best ways to, should the, should we approve. Um, I hope that you all had a chance to take a look at it. I, I uh, just wanted to take, take a moment to thank the committee for all their efforts there. Let's see, the sculpture park uh, will be coming before the committee uh, probably our next meeting. Um, but for those of you who don't know, uh, the sculpture park received a certification that a president wanted to donate a sculpture to the park. Um, and it happened to be another Dale Rogers and it's not a dog, but um, it's no Dale Rogers uh, uh, work. Um, and uh, I'm excited to uh, have uh, the sculpture park in to present that to the rest of the board. I think it'll be a nice addition. Let me see, uh, hopefully the next meeting, I'll be bringing forward uh, some uh, form, formulation documentation, if you will, uh, around a new uh, diversity, equity, inclusion uh, subcommittee that uh, Chairman Tiggas and I have been working on as well as a transportation subcommittee. Uh, hopefully we can get those up and off the ground, uh, but uh, very enthusiastic about those. Um, and that's, that's actually all I have, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Priest, Mr. Hogan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, one note, if I could. Um, I, I've said this in the past and I, I've always been very proud of the, the small part I played in making argument with uh, Chief Kent and uh, Town Administrator John Petron when we went to the State House to argue for taking the Burlington Police out of civil service uh, to have more control over our own departments. Um, that, that vote, getting that uh, permission from the state to get out of civil service uh, has caused us to be one of the most diverse police departments around because uh, we have more uh, flexibility in hiring a di- diverse group of people who are the most qualified, uh, not just because they're at the top of the list. Um, and, and to, to show that, for the first time uh, in our history uh, on uh, April third, the evening shift for the Burlington Police Department, the patrol, patrol persons on the street was made up of all females. Uh, it was quite a, a proud moment for uh, the town, for the department, for us. Uh, that, that diversity uh, that we worked on about ten years ago is, is, is coming to fruition right now uh, in, in the uh, backgrounds of uh, all of our de- police officers. We also uh, years before, last year was a terrible year. Um, you know, and the, the, the um, problems that we had with uh, uh, police departments and police officers who um, went outside the bounds uh, three years, two years before any of that started. Uh, the Burlington uh, Police Department uh, hired with a grant that we got, a couple of uh, mental health specialists. Uh, we still have one, uh, only works part-time, we should be ha- giving this individual more hours. And the success that she's had and the support that she has within the community and within the department uh, is, is very strong. So uh, I, I, you know, we can turn to within ourselves and look and see that we're doing a lot of things really well here. I'm not gonna say we're perfect, but we're doing a lot of things very well here and we are diverse and we are open and um, I, I'm very proud of the town and the department, so that's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan, Mr. Runyon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, as we all know, here in New England, we really have only two seasons. We have winter and we have construction season. Uh, the DPW has uh, released its uh, very lengthy list of uh, construction projects and maintenance projects. You know, for, uh, for, for the coming season and it includes a lot of road repair, water, uh, maintenance improvements. Uh, you, you heard them earlier for the street traffic signals and sidewalks and so on, soap and so on. Um, Spring Yardways collection, very, very busy and aggressive schedule um, coming up. All of this information is available on the, on the town uh, DPW website. If uh, you're wondering if your street's gonna be done this year, uh, you can check there. But I, I, I do believe if your street's being done, you, you will be notified by mail regardless. Uh, and secondly, um, I, I, I think, I believe we were, we were all in attendance uh, last week on the town common uh, for the Asian American Pacific Island Group to address um, what's, what's going on in the country and in, in terms of uh, harassment and, and, and violence and so forth. And I just, I just wanted to thank uh, uh, Nick Priest uh, who represented the uh, Board of Selectment quite well. Micah Spahoe uh, spoke eloquently um, on, on behalf of the planning board and his own uh, personal uh, experiences here in town. So it was a, it was an, and it was a nice event. I was uh, happy to have been there and I thought it was a, a really nice crowd and um, again, just, again, thanks to, to Nick and Micah Spahoe for uh, And again, just, again, thanks to, to Nick and Micah Spahoe for speaking on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Okay, that it, Michael? Mr. Morandi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have a couple of things I'd like to bring up. First of all, I'd like to thank Amy and her staff, even though Amy was outside on Saturday, holding her own signs for the reelection. It still went off without a glitch inside, they kept going in and out. So her staff definitely took over and did a fantastic job with the whole election process in the town with the covert and everything else going on. Secondly, I want to let yous all know, I took, I did a walkthrough on Friday, I believe it was, with Mr. Hayes and Mr. Sanchez on the new DPW facility that's being built. It's pretty close, they were wiring a lot of things, it is absolutely a beautiful building. So guys, I, I think we did, I think we did right on this building. The design team, the water attentions that's gonna be outside, look inside and outside is fantastic. So I'd like to thank those guys for doing, paying up job on that. And that's about all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Morandi, I just have one quick one in the essence of time. I'll just be quick, the fire department received a grant, fourteen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars. It's the state's firefighter safety equipment grant, and they'll be using that to replace aging fitness equipment at the fire station. Mr. Segreino, Town Administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of appreciations to put out there. This week is Public Safety Communications Appreciation Week. So I just want to give a shout out to all the town's dispatchers at both, both police and fire. I think everybody knows how important a role that they play in public safety around here. If you listen to the, the scanner, you can sort of see how important they add to the operation. Very difficult job. And secondly, it's Animal Control Officer Appreciation Week as well. So I just want to say thank you to Jerry for all he does within the town. So that's all I have this week, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Segreino. Any old business, new business? Citizens Time, do we have anybody out there? I know we have a few people in the meeting, do they want to bring anything up on Citizens Time? Are you seeing any hands, Paul?
I do not see any hands, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I apologize for the late meeting.
Second.
Okay. Fooled by Selectman Hogan, seconded by Selectman Morandi. We need a roll call vote to adjourn.
Yes.
Vice Chair Priest.
Yes.
Hogan.
Yes.
Runyon.
Yes.
Morandi. Did y'all wake up and answer?
Yes.
Okay, and the chairman's a yes. Thank you, you guys, thanks.
Mr. Tigas, Mr. Chairman, nice job tonight, great, great work.